And Sylvia will call me on the phone here. Here it is. Hi Sylvia.
Hi, Louise.
Yeah, I just said, I just called the meeting to order and said you were present by phone.
Thank you.
Okay, and so first order of business is approval of minutes June 11th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Public input. We have a nice crowd here tonight. Would anyone like to speak to the council? Come up to the microphone and state your name and address. And please come and speak to the council for five minutes or less. You want to, Jim?
I put my name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a letter to deliver to the council, but I'll use it for my notes right now.
Can you move the microphone a little? I don't see it's picking up. Is it?
How about now? Can you, can everybody hear me?
I don't think it's on. I don't think it's on.
Well, let's do that.
And I don't think it's your fault, Jim.
No. Well, I could use my theater voice. Is that better?
Yes.
I don't know. Okay, I'm, I'm here to follow up on my presentation on June 11th. I have a letter that I've written. I've done a little bit more research since June 11th on the ordinance that governs, that controls the ice and snow removal on sidewalks. I brought two of my tenants here who were in the house at the time, February 26th, when the ice and snow removal was done by Hawkeye Construction Snow Removal. And I'm going to give them a minute or two, if that's okay, to, to speak as well. They've been tenants for two years with me and very, very good tenants, very responsible tenants. But I'm contesting, well, I'm asking for a, an official vote on my request for reimbursement on this because last time we discussed it, but there was no action taken as far as I'm, I could see. And I didn't see anything since then. So I'm contesting this and asking for the reimbursement based on two of your own pieces in ordinance 165. One has to do with the 24-hour notice and one has to do with the who can order snow removal. Okay? The first one on the 24-hour notice, it's after a snow or ice event. The problem with that is that there is no way for anybody to know when that official 24-hour period begins. I have, I brought my invoice from Hawkeye Snow Removal. There is no indication on that, when the 24-hour period began and when they removed the ice. So that's totally up in the air. That has, there's no way to know whether the policy was, the ordinance was followed. Secondly, the ordering the snow removal by an outside agency like Hawkeye Snow Removal, that can only be done according to the ordinance 165 by the mayor, the city engineer, or a designated person. Now, I understand that Dottie was the one who reported the ice on 52 Olive Court to Virginia. Virginia then ordered Hawkeye Snow Removal. And as far as I know, based on my conversations with Sylvia, who she's, if she's on the phone, she can, can validate this, neither of those people are, were designated as the official contractor of snow removal services. So just on the basis of those two things, the 24-hour notice is, is so fuzzy and so, it can't be applied. It can't be applied. There's no way for a tenant or a landlord to know when that period begins. Okay? We've asked, I've asked the last time, I said, why couldn't it just simply something as simple as put a note on the door? If you go there to see the sidewalk, you're only another 25 or 30 feet from the door to put a note. Or if it's too hard to walk to the door, how about getting one of those little red flags? You know how they use for marking pipes and stuff like that? Just pop it in the ground. And then it's visible to the tenant. And I would drive by and I could say, oh my goodness, the 24-hour. The, the police, when you park in a 15-minute parking zone, the police will oftentimes, or a meter person will go by and chalk the tire. If they come back later and the chalk, the car's still there with the chalked tire, you get a ticket. Why can't there be something like that? This council needs to use some common sense. But I'm contesting this on the basis of your own ordinance. And I'm going to request that I be, actually, it's not me. My tenants paid the, the fine or the, the snow removal because that's part of their, their lease. And I'm here to really speak for them. And I would like to invite one or both of them up to speak them for themselves now.
Okay.
Emily Rositer and Leah Hot.
Thank you.
Hello, so I'm Emily Rositer. And like he said, this is my roommate Leah Hot. And I pretty much just want to say, we understand all your rules and regulations. Like Jim has said before, we've lived here for the past two years. We've never had like any problems with you guys before. We've kept like our yard maintained. We've gotten the snow removed on time. This was just a very like unique situation concerning the fact that we ran out of ice melt and we checked literally multiple places all around the city of Iowa City, Coralville, North Liberty, sometimes multiple times a day to try to get in, like when they got their shipment of ice melt in. But they'd always sell out like immediately. So we were even trying like our own like DIY things. We'd Google stuff like, oh, how do we remove ice? Because we know we have the 24 hours. So we were like sitting out there with like our own little concoctions trying to melt the ice, but we just simply ran out of time. And Jim brought up a good point. We don't know when the 24-hour like period begins or when it ends. It's.
Well, I mean, especially this past, sorry. This past winter was really just on and off. Like once the ice would melt, or once it melt again, then it would get really cold again. And then it'd freeze back over. So it was just nonstop. So again, it was hard for us to know when that 24-hour notice was going to happen, especially if it was just going to keep happening. So I don't think we had a fair chance. I think that's really what we're trying to get at, honestly.
And I guess that can kind of speak for anyone too, like not just us as like young adults who might still be in school or who also are also just like kind of figure a way out in the world. But like even like you people who like work full-time jobs and you actually have actual careers, like you could be at work by the time the snow starts or ends. So you don't really know exactly when like the 24-hour cycle like begins or ends, like I said before.
We are going to talk about this on the agenda with Mark Phelps with Hawkeye Construction. Does anyone want to comment on anything now, Virginia or?
No, I think, I think Mark couldn't address many of these issues.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue to talk about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just want to make one correction to the statements from Jim. It said, Dottie Maher is the chair of Sidewalk. I don't believe she was involved until later. So the two other individuals that you, you identified, one was Virginia Miller and the second was Lisa Moore. So those are the two counselors that initially worked on that issue. So I just want to correct any misunderstanding on who, who, what, what you heard at the last council meeting. I did not know Dottie Maher as the individual.
I don't know.
She is the chairperson.
My name was not mentioned Sylvia.
No, I think it was Virginia, was it not?
I was looking at, yeah, who ordered Hawkeye to do the clearing. And I have heard mentioned a couple of times from the three of you that it was special circumstances. It was so bad out. And that's exactly why we had to have it ordered to be cleared. It was special circumstances. People were falling. People were getting hurt. I was getting phone calls from constituents saying, I am looking out my window watching people fall and get hurt.
And Virginia called me and talked to me about it and what, and reviewed that it'd been, and reviewed that it'd been, first they, and you were talking to Stan Lawverman. And what I remember from the review is they waited several, maybe at least a week until the ice melt was back in because they were aware of that.
Ice melt ran out roughly within a day or two, February 13th. It was restocked within a week of that. So stores were back stocked with ice melt.
They made sure there was ice melt in the stores before they moved forward.
So yeah, there was a, there was a real problem with ice melt earlier in the month.
The point, the point I would add from last time, as I made again this time, a phone call to Hawkeye Snow Removal could have easily been a phone call or anything delivered to the property owner or the renter. A $400 charge for that. And last week or month ago, you told me you did me a favor. I don't need you to take care of my properties. Okay? I have insurance. I am well-covered for things like that. So you know, this is just a matter of common sense. And if you're, if that ordinance needs to be changed so that in Iowa City, as far as I know, we get notices as landlords, as property owners. And all of a sudden, University Heights decides, we're not going to tell the property owner or the renter. We're just going to wait and then snap them for 400 bucks. It's not right. It's not right.
Again, the, the chain, the, the reason for the urgency here is that people were falling.
Reason is no excuse for not following your own procedures.
Well, the procedure doesn't require a notice.
No.
The current procedure does not require a notice.
I know it doesn't.
And I know that's, I mean, I'm just going to clarify that.
Well, part of the reason that we're discussing this issue is it is now July and it's several months away before it begins to snow. So we're trying to look at the problem now and see if we need to change the process. So we're addressing it now. And the owner of the property, the property owner is responsible. Whether you delegate that to your tenants or not, you are liable and responsible.
I do regret that you passed this expense on to your tenants. I asked Steve if there's a way for us to write the ordinance so that the landlord has to pay it and cannot pass that on to their tenants because it is the landlord's responsibility. But I guess we are not legally allowed to do that.
You're saying in the ordinance now that I cannot do that as a landlord?
No, no, that's not what I said.
Oh, so, but you're going to consider putting that in?
No, I can't because I guess we're not allowed to interfere in a contract like that.
You can pass it on in the contract, but you are still liable. So if your tenants don't do it, it's still up to you to do it.
Thanks, girls, for speaking. We're going to discuss this shortly with Hawkeye Snow Removal and Dottie's committee. Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Thank you. Hi.
I'm Warren Tonawal. I live at 100 Cozer Avenue. So I haven't been to a council meeting for a while, so I don't know if this is going to be covered later or not. But I just had a couple of things I wanted to bring up, living on Cozer Avenue. One has to do with, I know the speed trailer's been out there multiple times. I was just curious what, what the data's showing from that? Are people obeying it or speeding? Living on Cozer, I think when they see the sign, they slow down. And if, you know, until they see it, maybe they tend to speed more. But I think it is effective when they can see their speed. But I was just wondering what the, what the data had showed, if it was helpful, not helpful, and then if there'd been any further consideration on any kind of permanent, you know, street sign that's got the 20 mile per hour on it and then a, you know, lights up or blinks or something if you're going over 20. I'm out there routinely like picking up the newspaper in the morning and, you know, you'll see people going 30 or 35 or texting, looking at their phone as they're going down the street, which is really irritating with, you know, when you've got kids. So just, that was one thing is what, what status is that? Then the other, I see Triangle Park on here, so maybe it's coming up. But I was curious what's going on with the park down there at the corner of Cozer and Melrose. You know, it's been sitting, doesn't look like anything's been going on for a while. I thought it was just a matter of getting some limestone blocks in there for seating, which I think is, would be great. And the other thing with that was I'm not sure what happened with the free library or the sharing library. I'd like to see that back. I don't know why that disappeared, so.
I can answer, I can answer that because the Boy Scouts did it and they've given up on doing it. And so we've moved.
Doing, doing what?
Up to one university place here. They, they weren't interested in, you know, rehabbing the structure.
Oh, the actual.
Yeah, which is falling apart. And apparently they told me, or the scout, scout master told me that they weren't interested in doing it anymore.
Okay. Well, if it got reinstalled, I'd be happy to maintain it if that, if that helps.
The books are here.
The books are here.
I like the free library concept. I mean, I thought it was nice when it was there.
We need somebody to build a new one.
Start from scratch with a new one.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe I'll think about that. Okay.
So with your.
You might be able to like.
With your initial question, just really quickly, we, we did pull out of data earlier when, I mean, it's been, obviously you've seen the trailer there before. I don't know if you've met the chief of police yet?
No, I haven't.
He's in the back of the room. You guys may want to have a quick chat because he'll be able to fill in quite a bit.
All right. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Warren. Okay, I got this list. And Kip, did you want to speak now?
Sure. Kip Sheldon.
Yep, Kip Sheldon, 316 Mahaska Drive. And I was going to talk about some things with the tree board, but I understand that's going to be later on in the meeting. But I guess since after listening to Mr. Schamanski, I, I would think it, something maybe the board should look at.
Microphone, please.
Should it possibly look at contacting the residents? I think that that might be reasonable, especially after a week and you've allowed snow melt if people still have yet to maintain their sidewalks unless it's too burdensome. I think that that would be reasonable. I too would also like to see moving forward on, us moving forward on the Triangle Park, whatever that means. So, and then I'll talk later and when the tree board has a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thanks, Kip. And then I have Dan Stantz. Are you just going to talk with tree board? Dan, are you, you want to talk right now?
Yeah, I, no, Kip's going to be the tree board. I was just, excuse me.
Dan's going to walk to the microphone.
I'm Dan Stantz from 310 Gulfview. And I just wanted to get an update on what's happening with Triangle Park. It seems like it's been sitting in this current state for a long period of time. It's hot out. I'm sure the bicyclists and walkers would really like to have a fountain, would really like to have water, would really like to have someplace to sit. And it seems like, from my understanding of what's remaining, it's a one-day, two-day operation. I just don't understand why it's not.
I'll give a quick update. Jim Glasgow just poured the concrete pad for the drinking fountain about four days ago. And the plan is to, they have to wait about a week. At the end of this week, he's planning on putting in the drinking fountain and then continuing to finish in the next two weeks. Is what he told me. But that's on the agenda too. And Dottie's going to discuss that a little bit more.
In great length and explain why nothing has been done, really.
And so would anyone else like to speak who isn't on the list? Okay, I think, Dottie, we should, since we have several people here about the snow removal.
Okay.
That we have Mark Phelps come up and, and you go ahead and talk about maintaining the sidewalk surfaces and what ideas you and Mark discussed.
Yeah, we were, we talked about the ordinance as it is now and how, and how we might improve the situation. And we also discussed possibly putting notices or some kind of mark on the house. So Mark, why don't you go ahead and explain what we, what you told me about.
And you got to talk in the microphone too.
We were given the list, started on about the 25th of February. And it was generated and then there was a few more properties added to the list that was on there. We, we primarily started on the 25th through about the 28th to work on them. I'm not sure when the 24-hour notice was given. Prior to that, I was just given a list to do them. Going forward though, I tend to agree that there should be some type of notification, whether it's a tag, a phone call, but that involves somebody else that I don't want to be responsible for, for notifying people from sidewalks. We were given the task to take care of it, but I didn't notify anybody prior to that. We do know, I do know, if anybody had any question, exactly what time we were there, we were instructed by Mr. Lawverman to photograph before, after, and during, of which I gave him all that information and all our stuff as far as when we entered. Our service tickets on our software is all timestamp. So I know, I can tell you exactly the time, if anybody has any questions, when we were at the property and at which properties. Going forward, this was a unique year. There wasn't ice melt available. We did wait on Virginia's instruction. And for anybody, it would, it would be tough to find it. Now, going forward for next year, I said we can make it available if there is a homeowner, tenant, or anything else like that, they can contact us. We have the ability to get it when local box stores sell out. If that's something that needs to be done, we can take care of that. But I would, if we have to do any more, I would like to know that somebody has been given some notice of some type, so I'm not the bad guy.
So what would you suggest? Like hanging a tag on the door or like he suggested, maybe a red flag or something like that? Probably a tag with a date or time on it would be best.
I would suggest tagging them. Maybe that's something the police force can do. If there is a complaint, they tag them and then give it to us. And then, you know, as long as they tag it, we could check it to make sure it was taken care of inside of 24 hours. I'd be willing to do that. It gets down to a gray area for us because that is considered site monitoring. And we're not insured to do site monitoring. That is something completely different in storm removal when it comes to larger complexes. That is something that we won't do and the insurance on that is completely different. So, but if we were given a time that says, listen, this property was tagged, you know, and if I get an email or however I'm giving it, if I'm given 24 hours to, to look at it, come back and recheck it, I will do that and then go forward with it if need be. But the notification has to come from somebody else besides me. I don't know if a, a flag in the yard would necessarily work because if we get rain, it's going to be completely ice and that wouldn't be able to be put in, into the ground. I would think a high-visibility tag that's put on the door, that's what the city of Iowa City uses, is they use an orange tag for storm removal. Their grass tags are green and they write and, and stamp them and so that they go from there. They also have a list online that we use to make sure none of our properties that we maintain get tagged at any point in time. So I don't know if it's something that would be as easy to put on the website, if these are the properties that somebody can check. I mean, I check them, I check our Iowa City stuff on a daily basis during the winter time because anything can happen as far as freezing.
Did you talk to Mr. Schamanski? Did he call you or talk to you about his property?
I, did we talk? Yeah, I believe we did talk, yes. And I don't think I gave you an exact time, but I can. I mean, I know exactly, I don't personally write. But I'd have to go back and look and see exactly, based upon the pictures that are there, because we did several that were on Olive Court and I can't remember what's there. Most of the ones we removed ice from was anywhere from four to six inches. So it had been a while and if you're doing it by hand, somebody would have been out there all day long. That is a tough chore for anybody to remove that.
So do you recommend?
I would, well, I guess we need to ask Steve too. Do you think that would be one possible viable solution? To put a tag on the door and with the time and date and take a photo of the ice?
Sure, if that's, I think that's, that's within the council's discretion. If that's what the council wants to do, we should amend our ordinance in that case.
Yeah.
Steve, do you have any concerns about the police doing it?
What's the question? I can't hear councilors because they're not using the microphone.
Nick asked if the police should be doing it. Is there a problem with that? Is that okay?
Can I, can I speak to this from a historical perspective? So in the three councils ago, when Jim Rain, Mike Haverkamp and Jerry Zimmerman and myself were on this council, this discussion on clearing accumulation, whether it be Iowa City who was hitting up against Mahaska residents, or whether it be sidewalks that were iced from accumulation, historically, the city took a good neighbor policy position. And that is something that the ordinance was not amended at the time for. It was just a good neighbor policy whereby the police and the housing inspector did provide these types of one-time-only notifications. I'm not too sure how the notice was handled, but I sure know that there was a great deal of discussion about the quality of life and messaging that the council wanted to have for our community. Did we want to be a homeowners association, you know, exacto type of regulator? Or did we want to be friendly with our residents and speak cooperation by giving them at least an opportunity, one time only, not repeated? That was provided by the police and the housing department at that time. I don't know whether that policy was put in writing, but I certainly do know that that was the consensus of that body of counselors.
Well, my.
Steve, since you were present at those meetings, you might have more information on, on the famous good neighbor policy. Do you recollect anything in addition to what I've said?
I don't remember, I don't remember any policy being adopted, which is not to say that it wasn't. I know the ordinance wasn't amended.
I'm, I'm concerned about public safety and the liability.
So was that council. That council was concerned about balancing safety and getting enforcement, two things.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I guess the question is, could, would the police be able to do that within their job description, so to speak, or whatever? Or would we have to hire someone specifically to do that?
So to answer Nick's question and Dottie's, I don't see a legal issue with having the police, you know, provide notices or hang things on doors. You know, in the past, not with respect to that, this particular issue that I can recall, but with respect to other issues, I know that there have been complaints by citizens who felt like police involvement and more, you know, ministerial-type things seemed pretty heavy-handed. They didn't like the police knocking on their door. They don't like getting a letter from the lawyer either, which I can understand. You know, so, so it's that, 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 those are the considerations. And of course, I would defer to Chief Kelce about, you know, his views of it. But from a legal standpoint, no, there's nothing wrong with, with tasking the police with, with hanging those kinds of notices.
Troy, what, what do you think about it?
As long as we're talking about your. Before he says something, may I interject real quick? Because I can tell you, we used to give out hanging notices. It was on pink paper, not red. And it was put in the door of these properties and it was by the police. So I just want to give you some historical information.
May I just also say that we, that Stan, the housing inspector, did engage in a lot of good neighbor policy this winter. It was a very tough winter. We didn't have anybody's sidewalks cleared until February 26th. Everything up until that point was handled by calling or emailing the landlord. But when people are falling on your sidewalk and getting hurt, you have violated the good neighbor policy and that goes out the window.
Regarding the question about police participating in it, I think that it actually touches on what you all have talked about, whether it's communication of a problem and the opportunity to get it cleaned up, being a good neighbor. I know when Stan and I talked about other things, he was reluctant for some of the issues that Steve said about having it appear heavy-handed. If what you're talking about is going around and delivering some sort of visible notice, putting it on the door, hanging it, absolutely, we are out. It isn't going to take precedence over other calls for service, accidents, things like that. But we are driving around. And if that's the wish of the council for us to take a role in helping deliver that communication, not going to the, the emergent needs that Virginia was addressing when, you know, look, this isn't being taken care of and we need to do it now, there's, that would still obviously be a place. But just delivering, it isn't emergent right now, but you haven't taken action. It snowed a day ago or two days ago and there's snow that's building up. And if you don't take care of it, it's going to get packed down and turned into ice. Yes, if that's the desire of council, we are out. It's, it's just the same as, as helping with, whether it be farmer's market or football parking, police calls, we're going to take precedence, but we're out there and we can, we can play a role in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Troy.
Okay. I guess what I would recommend is that we amend the ordinance with Steve and include the tag and placement on the door in the manner in which Troy suggested. I think, you know, the problem is not so much with our citizens per se, our homeowners citizens. I think some of the problems emerge with landlords who delegate to their tenants and the tenants fail to take care of the problem. And the landlord needs to supervise to see if the tenant has followed through. Now, that might have been the case here. It might have happened okay, but I think many times they fail to follow through and therein lies the problem. So I think a notice is a good idea.
Is this going to be every time or one notice per season?
Oh, no. I think the first time that it happens, you put a notice on the door. And I think if it should continue to happen, you'd continue to notice them. I mean, I think it's a really important public safety issue. And I agree with Virginia that when you see people falling, which they will do on the sidewalks if they're covered with ice and snow, and many people are pedestrians, they walk to work, they walk to school. It's hazardous occupation. And I think, you know, it's up to us to maintain a safe surface. So I believe in being pretty directive about it.
Mark, you look like you want to say something.
You know, I'd like to also add that from my perspective, where I'm coming from, is that I'm interested in making sure that ordinances are uniformly applied to everyone and that they are applied consistently and with a process around them. A process that balances the, you know, the rights of the homeowners who live in that property and are taking care of that. I think we heard from one of the tenants who made a really good point. When I go to work, sometimes I have to go to work really early in the morning and I may only have time to dump, you know, cat litter or de-icing, but to sit there and stay there and scrape, I don't have time to do that. However, you need that 24-hour period in order to accomplish complying with the ordinance. So if, as a, you know, someone who wants to have sidewalks in my neighborhood, we need to have a process that is orderly so that it, there's trust in the, between the people who have to clear the sidewalks and the people who travel on the sidewalks. Otherwise, our city is going to be lacking sidewalks because we don't have a fair process to apply our ordinance. So whatever it takes to get to that point, we need to find that sweet spot balancing the interest of people who aren't paying attention to, you know, ice and the people who are, because the people who do just avoid those patches, they don't walk on those areas. And the ones that aren't paying attention or take the risk, that's their responsibility. But there's also the responsibility of the homeowner, whoever that is, whether it's a tenant or a property owner, to clear those sidewalks.
I think we've acknowledged all of that, Sylvia.
Property interests of everyone. We have to find the balance here.
I think we've acknowledged that.
One way or the other.
So do we need a resolution here or a motion to?
I think Steve needs some, if you have the direction, and then he can bring something back to the council and they can review it.
Yeah, and I would recommend, Steve, that you take a look at Coralville. They do have a notification process.
Sure, thanks.
I think we've already given Steve some ideas too here, so I think.
Mark, you look like you wanted to add something?
Since I worked with Stan on other issues in Iowa City, I would give you two points. One, the notification, I would either do it once or set a cap limit, it's the number of times you need to notify an individual on nuisance properties. Just because it's going to take up council time, police time, however it's going there. So Iowa City uses, you get once per season and then after that, you can automatically have it done again if there is, is there a need for emergency. So if you don't want to be real strict, maybe, you know, if you're notified twice or three times and then after that. Secondly, if the property is a rental property, you do know that they have a rental permit, you obviously have communication. And since I've had rental properties in Iowa City, I do have a communication where sometimes the notice is delivered to the door and the tenants are not taking care of it. Maybe they're gone during winter break and therefore you don't know about it. I always like to see a second communication go directly to the property owner, maybe not in a form of a letter because it takes too much time, but a simple email or phone call to make them aware if they're not here, then it gets by, well, I didn't know that this needed to be done. And just, it's just, it's a courtesy in my opinion, because I see it on both sides that sometimes I'm not notified for something and a simple phone call would have taken care of it. So.
Thank you.
You bet. Counsel, I, Mr. Shemansky wants counsel to consider paying back the tenants. That's what you said tonight, correct? And what, do you have a recommendation, Dottie?
I would, no, I think the responsibility is with Mr. Shemansky. He should pay his tenants back, actually. And, no, I don't think, he should be reimbursed.
Do you want to put it in a motion?
I would make that motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? So this is a motion that?
Mr. Shemansky should pay his tenants back.
Mr. Shemansky. I mean, I don't think the council can, but the city will not reimburse.
Correct, the city will not reimburse.
Reimbance either Mr. Shemansky or the tenants. Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so it's for one, that he will not be paid back or the tenants. Now we'll go on to the other, the Triangle Park.
Oh boy, yes.
And Dottie, you're up again.
Okay. Can we have the pictures up on the?
Yep, just finishing up writing.
Board here.
You have a handout you gave us too.
I gave you, the council, the handouts and they should be on the board. Can you get the writing up on the board?
What?
Can we get the writing up on the board too?
Which one do you want first? You have one or the other to start with.
Oh, okay, the picture's fine. Now, to backtrack, Jim Glasgow and Greg Stilner, who are building Narian Hotel, have in their agreement with U-Highs designated $50,000 to be spent on parks, which we focused primarily on Triangle Park because at the time, that was the only park that we owned. So, and it was to be apportioned 10 grand by 10 grand year by year. Well, as one knows, when one builds, sometimes that is not reasonable or practical. What you see up there is the diagram of the park as it is envisioned with the pavers and the little gazebo, the benches, the bike rack, the water fountain, et cetera. And I wish that Jim was here tonight, but he's not, so I guess I'll just go ahead. The money to be spent is that of Greg and Jim. This is not the city of University Heights. This is not part of our money or our budget. They contributed this for many reasons. One being that it's, the Triangle Park is only two blocks from the new hotel. And it's really the new kind of business district because we have Stella's, we have the dental office, the park, the flower garden, and now the hotel. The park, as it is envisioned by the visionary project, is, is kind of a landmark in that it marks the entry and exit to the city. And it's, it should be a matter of beautification and use. So we need to do the groundwork, which involves a great expenditure in the beginning. And it has to be done first in order to put, do any footings or paving or any of the basic, I'm not a engineer, so I'm not using the right words, the basic under, underwork so that they can do the footings and, and the concrete on top so that we don't have to go in, dig it up, and do it over again if, if we're doing it only piecemeal. So I've asked a number of times for the council permission to go ahead now to get this done and to spend more than 10 a year because Jim and Greg have offered the money in bulk and we need it to get the basic project done. A nickel today is not a nickel next year. It's going to cost a hell of a lot more next year than it does this year. And many of the things that they are now doing in, in digging and building the foundation for the hotel, they have available so that it's much easier now for them to do the sort of work they need to do in the park as long as they're doing it right down the street for the hotel. So I'm thinking that if I could persuade the council to, to step aside and realize that you need to have the basic money spent, which would be another, I think, what did, I don't know if she got that up on the screen. It would be, let's see.
Are you wanting that, Dottie?
Yeah, if you've got it, yeah, if they can read it. The demolition in the beginning was to remove the structure, remove the concrete pad, the north side concrete, the, the cap the conduit, install new fiberglass holes for the water meter, and place topsoil, relocate the water line for the drinking fountain, replace any removed sidewalk, and then purchase and install the drinking fountain. That was $19,800, which we have done. Now, we need to have Triangle Park Phase Two, which would be footings for the bench shelter and bike rack, the concrete ribbon and curbing for the brick patio, and pour the concrete subbase for the brick paving and do the brick paving. That would be another $25,000. So to upgrade to Phase Two would be $42,000. So I need to have an approval, approval from the council to get that done so that we can then spend money to buy the bench and the shelter and a new bike rack. So, you know, if the citizens have already stated, you know, and we've had two comments here tonight about what are we doing with the park? It hasn't, it just sort of looks like a dung heap, nothing has been done. Well, it doesn't look like anything's been done, but there has been something done, but not enough. And we spent a year with the visionary project and we had many, many meetings and the citizens said they wanted Melrose to be widened and they wanted Triangle Park to be refurbished and upgraded. So the citizens of the city have already spoken, but the council can't seem to vote to get their act together, to get the money approved so that Jim and Greg can go ahead and do the project as we have offered and planned. So that's kind of where we are. Now, if anyone has any more questions about it, I'd be glad to try to answer. Jim isn't here tonight and I doubt if, does Greg know much about the park? Do you want to say something?
I do want to say that the, I know Jim poured some concrete and he wanted to let the concrete cure so we can start drilling in to the concrete for the, for the drinking fountain. So this, later on this week, the drinking fountain should be installed later on this week. So that's what some of the delay, delay was, was waiting for the concrete to cure. As far as the, the next phase, we're wide open. Whatever you guys want to do, we're, we're agreed to whatever you guys decide, so.
Okay, so you're, if the council approves, you're ready to move forward?
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Okay.
But we had a, we had a plan that was already in place, is that right?
That's correct.
Yes, with limestone seeding, the fountain, yes.
Was there something holding that up from just getting that done?
No, he just explained that, that.
I just.
But I mean, I mean, after this, after this drilling can happen because the concrete's cured, is there anything that would hold that up from just going as we planned?
I spoke to Jim earlier today about that exact thing. So as soon as he gets this fountain, he's going to go, I think he said sod, maybe, I'm not for sure, but yeah, I think we're, it's a, it's a hundred percent full bore go to get it done quickly as possible.
Under the current budget?
Under the, yeah, whatever we, yep, the 19,8, yep, absolutely. So we should, you should see that done here in the next week or so.
Sounds great, thank you.
I would say two weeks tops. I'll push Jim on that too, so.
Yeah, he's ready to do that and that money has already been allotted. But what we're talking about now is an extra, the extra $20,000, which we're going to need for.
No problem.
So Dottie, you're suggesting to the council to add this to the?
Correct, so that we can move, as soon as he puts the fountain in, we can move forward and do the basic under, underlay, whatever it is, so that we can get the pavers in and that sort of thing.
Yep, no problem. And I want to apologize for the delays. I know we had a lot of weather issues and then right after the weather issues, the came Fourth of July week, so, so we'll get on it.
Well, I remain uninterested in adding $25,000 to this project. I think the $19,000 project as approved last fall is a very nice project. I would like to see it done as soon as possible.
It's their money, it's not the council money.
But it's not our money to allocate either. That, that extra $30,000 belongs to future councils to spend how they see fit and it can go towards any park space.
Well, nothing will be done then because if nothing can be done, then we've already spent that money.
That money could be put towards purchasing the, the missing chunk of Swisher, for example. But either way, I think we were given $20,000 to spend and so we need to not spend more of that.
Well, I'd be glad to put in 5,000 of my own if we could get everybody off their butts and do something. But the council simply can't, has no vision. The citizens are saying, what is going on? Nothing. And the council refuses to move.
No, I like the plan that we approved.
Yeah.
In November with the lovely limestone block seeding. I think that will be wonderful and I think we move ahead with that and stop discussing.
Yeah, I'd like to see it done and see what it looks like.
Well, you're going to need more money before you could do the?
No, it's all included in this.
Apparently we don't need more money. We can just finish the plan that we've already approved, correct?
But my dear, the plan that you have approved only goes through here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, there's no paving there.
No, we don't need any more paving.
We have a sidewalk, we have seeding, we have a fountain.
We have, and we have a dog fountain. Okay.
So what I want to know is what this council is doing with respect to public feedback. You have residents that are the taxpayers for the city and the budget. They're showing up and telling you, as far as I can tell from my vantage point here from Dan Dance telling you what happened to Triangle Park. It's looking so sad. And like I said many months ago, your $50,000 green contribution from the hotel team is worth less and less as time is going by because of the principle of the discounted, discounted dollar. And that basically means as your, as your, as your money is aging in a budget line item, your buy, your purchase power is going down. And with the Chinese carer still going on, concrete, steel, and all of those nice things are costing more. So just from a pure economic perspective, I'd rather get this project done now because we can buy more, more of whatever it is. because we can buy more, more of whatever it is, more, more benches, more bike racks, more shelter, whatever, than three years, four years down the road. So from an economic perspective, that's what I'm presenting to this council. So your fifty thousand dollars that you're getting is being discounted by inflation every day that this council doesn't make a decision on super basic administrative issues on Triangle Park. Been twen, almost twenty-four months that that park should have been cleaned up, wrapped up, and ready to go.
Right.
I will tell you all, and I'll remind you, that Tower Court Park, I take this much controversy to get put together. And it is a lovely park. It got done within one year, and that was it. Delivered, done, and sealed, and people love it. So I'm just saying, for the majority of this council, to stop dragging your feet and let's get moving on finding a common ground solution. If you don't like Dottie's design, then work with her to come up with a design that gets us to where we need to conclude our park.
That's what we did last fall, we came up with a very nice design. Now, I'm sorry for putting you gentlemen who spoke earlier on the spot, but would anyone like to stand up and advocate for adding twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget of this project?
This is not the city budget, this is the money that the boys are giving as part of the, the contract that they signed with the city.
Right.
Which does not have to go to Triangle Park.
Oh, God.
I think people are pretty satisfied with.
Pat Yegy's talking.
People understand the plan. The people that said, it's not like people are clamoring, what's happening with the park. The two people that did speak both said they hadn't been paying attention. And I can see why they asked that. I think people are pretty satisfied with the way you're spending the money now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you put a motion on the table, Dottie, so we can either move, move forward?
Well, I move that we move forward on the park as Jim has proposed.
Adding that twenty.
Adding the twenty-five, which is their money and their contribution.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, a second by Sylvia. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no.
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 Okay.
Even with my promise to pay five thousand out of my own pocket? No.
The vote is.
That's pathetic.
Not a sustainable way to.
Two yes and three no. Okay, so the project will move forward as.
Can we all in this room expect that the park will be finished in two weeks?
I'm sorry, can you repeat what, what the vote was on? Because I'm hearing the opposite of what I thought I voted on. So I voted, in my mind, to authorize the plan proposed by Jim, which may involve usage of up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
An extra twenty-five, it's the nineteen eight.
Two of us voted yes, the others, the others voted no.
Right. And so did the majority say no to that proposal?
Three said no, two said yes.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
So, can we in this room expect, Greg, I'm looking at you on this, that the park, as designed with a budget of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, will be finished in two weeks?
I would say within the next two weeks.
Okay, two weeks.
No longer than that, I think, for sure.
Finished.
We are promising.
Jim Glasgow said to me on the phone today that sometime the end of the week, or the first of the week, he'd, after it's cured, he'd put in the fountain. And then, from then on, in the next couple of weeks, he'd complete the project that was approved in November.
But there isn't anything else to do.
There's limestone seeding. Yes, and it's going to be lovely.
Oh, it'll be just lovely.
Well, I think it will be.
Limestone seeding.
In your interpretation.
Is there some grass? I really don't know, is there, do we got to put some sod down?
Well, it'll be seeded, is my understanding.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll finish it, I'll just push to get done.
No place to sit or anything like that, but, you know, there'll be grass, you can sit in the grass.
Limestone blocks.
Let's keep moving on here with the agenda. You know, I know there's a couple of people here from the Tree Board. And so let's move to Virginia Miller's discussion of recommendation from the Tree Board in regards to the Swisher Track. Do you want to start, Virginia?
Sure. The Tree Board has been discussing what should happen next on Swisher, and I really appreciate their work on this. So they have put together a four-phase plan. Daniel, I'm, sorry, David, would you like to come up and, sorry about that? Yeah, David and Kip, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, my name is David Boz. I live at two ten Cozer Avenue, and I am the Chair of the Tree Board. And in discussion about Swisher Woods, this is just a tentative outline plan. This is not set in stone, this is just sort of just to gather our thoughts as to what we want to do. And we have broken it down, it's subject to change, it's subject to discussion, but we just wanted to put something down to show what we had in mind. So I will talk briefly about Phase One, and then, Kip, who's going out the door, we'll talk about Phase Two. Phase One is just to secure the land as a conservation place. We're just looking into that, making sure that it stays as little disturbed as possible. We don't want to see it become a developed place in future years. We want to leave it as much of it is, as a piece of woodland, that the people of University Heights and the surrounding area can go and enjoy some woods in the middle of the University Heights and Iowa City. I have talked to Mark Madsen from the Burr Oak Land Trust, not doing anything more than just understanding, because I'm a volunteer. This isn't my area of expertise, I just want to understand what we need to do to make sure that the land is good to go. Am I missing anything? Okay, okay, do you want to talk about Phase Two, or?
I did have a question on Phase One, and perhaps you can answer it for me. Why is it only that Swisher Track is identified as a twelve acre, twelve acres of, of, let me see, what is it exactly? I think it's twelve acres only of land. The, the, there's additional land, we're an acre missing. The reason why that one acre was omitted?
I don't understand.
I, I was rounding up, because I believe it's actually like eleven point eight acres.
Yeah, it's like eleven point eight.
Uh, no, I think it was thirteen, remember?
No, no, I'm sorry, that's incorrect.
The auction house provided us with revised plat information that indicated thirteen point something acres.
No, it was ten point something, and they moved it up to eleven point eight, is how I remember it.
Hey, we'll have to look at that information, but I was just curious why, why some acreage was missing.
No, Daniel's correct, it's eleven point eight four acres.
It might be in the document, so I'll take that question off and, and research it with Louise. Thank you.
My apologies, I again flubbed David's name. David is correct, it's eleven point eight four acres. So his rounding up to twelve is what he's, that's what we're referencing there. It's not thirteen acres, Sylvia.
Okay.
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry. Can you speak into the microphone, Virginia, and just?
Yeah, I'm looking at the Beacon website right now. David is correct, the property is eleven point eight four acres. Round, you know, he rounded up to twelve to make things simple, but no, there's no missing acreage here.
Sure, sure, okay.
Okay. So then on to the next phase, which would, Phase Two, which would be, it would take place around the, at the same time as Phase One. These aren't like one step, these, sometimes these coincide with each other. And this would be focusing particularly on signage for the entrance into the Swisher Track, so that people understand, you know, basic things, that it's open from dawn to dusk, that there's no smoking, there's no camping, pets need to be on a leash. And we will be looking into what would be the best approach for signage, how it would look, what kind of budget we would be looking at for that. Kip, do you have anything you want to add?
You kind of have to talk in the microphone, because it's hard for even people in this room.
Kip has some pictures that he's gonna, that he can share. He's taken some pictures from parks around the county, I believe, that will be able to showcase what we're looking at in particular, what, some ideas that we have.
Sit here and talk?
I could do that.
So that's Phase Two, right? I had a question on Phase Two, and that is with respect to accessibility. Is the conservation easement that you're proposing workable for developing concepts of parkland? Because part of the bond initiative that authorized the purchase of the Swisher Track was for both conservation and parkland usage. So how consistent is the Tree Board's recommendation with that language?
I would call it consistent.
Virginia said she'd call it consistent.
I think that's a matter of interpretation.
I don't want to hear from Virginia, I want to hear from the Tree Board.
I missed the question.
Yeah.
Just change over to Mac, and so I'm not very knowledgeable on my computer.
The, the question that we were asked, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question for Kip?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, how, okay, so the bond language that the voters used to authorize and rely on in order to cast their vote, authorizing the, the, the money to purchase for Swisher Track, is worded to provide that that language, that that land is for parkland and conservation of, of water, air, soil, and flora and fauna. My question to the Tree Board is, the conservation easement that is proposed in this report, how consistent is it with that bond language, in particular, the, the parkland aspect, which could mean as simple as making trails that are accessible for kiddos in our community, which we have, who have physical limitations, like multiple scuriosis, or residents that are in wheelchairs, or other individuals who are walking with canes, or just individuals that need to have a much more clean, accessible surface other than chips and dirt to, to manage through.
We are working on those.
He's answering the question, he's answering the question now, okay.
We are, we are working on those details. Again, this is just an idea, a sort of a roadmap as to where we want to be, or where we want to get there. None of this is etched in stone. We just want to have some kind of blueprint or playbook to go by, to make sure that we're not missing anything, and making sure we're going nice and slow, and making sure we have everything we need to proceed properly. So some of it, we may not, this conservation easement talk, it may just go into the ether. It's just to put something down, so that we have some kind of path to get there. So we may not actually go anywhere with that, but we just want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to reserve this, this, this track, so that in the future, it isn't, you know, torn down and, you know, a hotel is built, frankly. We like to have some kind of woodland.
And not sold off to neighbors that want to have, you know, double their property size. I get it. And those would be the ones that might be a buddy. So we've already had requests like that, so I do appreciate the foresight with the proposal. I am concerned about the scope of limiting future councils to take action on the ability to deliver for parkland. I think there's only one bench proposed. Well, how about birding stations? There's been a couple of residents that are really excited, because they already do this, and they would like a little bit more of a formal area for, I think it's an overlook, or I don't know what the birding people call it. But I'd like to see more feedback, I'd like to see the public and residents involved in, in what they envision when the city has the money to, to make anything possible and have a discussion around that, other than rushing into, and this is, this comment about rushing is more directed to this council, rushing into projects that, that don't really have a, a good outcome. And we already have a couple of those on the record this year. So I do appreciate you making the statement that you want to take it slow, you want to do your due diligence. On the one hand, I want to involve the community, make this super transparent as to what is happening with their eleven acres of land, that their property is caring.
Sylvia, Sylvia, this is Kip. Thank you, you made some really good cogent points. And we've made strides in that, we've talked to many of the homeowners, the, the ones especially affected by the area around the park, and gotten some preliminary input. And we are going slow. In fact, some of the comments that you made were ideas that we have, but we're not ready to present them until it's the correct time, because I think it was quite clear to everyone that we were to move slowly and get public input, and talk to them about what, what the end product looks like.
So where is this?
So what I have up, I'm presenting a slideshow, Sylvia, of some pictures we've taken, not only in the spring, but in the wintertime, and some of the constraints that we're up against. Our first goal, it should actually probably be Phase One, is signage. At our meetings, we've discussed, and I brought up the issue that Dottie initially brought up about the liability issues. And so that's basically where we'd like to move forward now, and to get funds for perhaps three signs at three, I would say, natural entrances. And that'd be the end of Sunset, the end of Prospect, and then Golf View. And the signs, and the slideshow is, is different signs that I've found at various parks. Do you have some idea then what we want it to look like? It, it doesn't have to be permanent signs. I think that there's been some discussion about putting up signs that can be, you know, you can, you can open up the doors and put different notices in. Ultimately, we may want to go that route, especially at the primary entrance, wherever that may be. But initially, what I'm seeking the council for is discussion on some signs like this, with one sign of everything that we need to have down there from a legal perspective, from a liability perspective, initially. And I'm guessing two or three hundred dollars per sign, times three. And so that's what, along with the little doggy pickup things and a trash, and that was the other thing, who's going to pick up the trash? You know, these are the discussions we're having at the Tree Board. So, something like that, of course, including other things, is what we're looking at initially, as we move forward in, in getting public input. Another thing I wanted to point out is the wintertime. If you could.
You want that, or go?
Not really. No, it was just, we're not planning on putting in a trail like that. But if you do, there's some things you may want to look at. You can fast forward.
I'm up to here, is that where you want to be?
Right. No, you can continue on, just some issues with trails that I found over at Lake McBride. But as you can see, yeah, you can fast forward. Area closed at dark, carry out your trash. This, this trail here is ultimately what I would like to, for it to look like. It, I, I don't know what is the subsurface of that trail, but it's very nice. You can see at the top has what I believe to be gravel, and then some wood chips, which we have readily available. We just need somebody to come in there with wood chips, but maybe a gravel, period, area of gravel. And we're going to do some research on trails. We, we're not trail experts. Again, we want to get started on the signage. So what I'm, I guess we're asking the council to move forward on is temporary signs. Some, a couple could be permanent, because the primary entrance would have something more elegant, eventually. We want to utilize that money, try to capitalize on, on grants. And I think we have a great team. we have a great team to put it together and get some input from the public, make it happen.
Steve, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Is there a zoning designation for parkland?
Can't remember.
Because I wonder if, as sort of like a belt and suspenders approach, we should also consider pursuing that as a council, if there is?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, that it probably is something to look at. I don't really remember that there is one, but I'm going to look while we're talking.
Or if there's a different applicable zoning designation that should be considered, maybe-
Yeah, sometimes zoning ordinance will talk about public spaces or something, but, you know.
I also, I have a question too, because in Phase Three, you indicate that the trail could be made of wood chips, and I don't think, my personal opinion, and I guess I'd need to get an opinion from Steve, but that is not going to comply with the, you know, ADA or anything like that, so.
Yeah, that's a balancing act, because again, we want to keep it as undisturbed as possible, but we also want it to be accommodating to everyone. So wood chips is the natural, is more natural, but we've looked at, as Kip has pictures of, the trail that probably has a gravel base underneath that would be more natural, but would also be more accessible. Asphalt or concrete is going to cost considerably more.
Well, handicap accessible is absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
And the cost is not really a factor when that sort of thing is involved, you know. So I think you need to really, and I guess I'd ask Steve to look into that a little further.
I think it's appropriate to look at wood chips as a first step, though, because if, I mean, if we don't maintain them, they will disappear, and nothing will have ever happened, you know? And so from there, you can establish a trail, and then we can upgrade portions of it as needed in the future, without having made any investment.
Well, we have, full disclosure, I'm also the Director of Development at Trees Forever, and we have, my colleague Emily Swihart is a design specialist, particularly at trails and trail visioning, and she would, she has visited us and visited the site, and she has had some input, and we can go back to her to get some more input as well about what would be the best path forward.
And Steve, I would appreciate, you know, your input in this too, if you could, you know, look into it, because, you know, I think it's really critical, just critical. I mean, if you have walkers and you've got persons, you know, with canes and in any kind of compromised position, you're, it's not going to fly.
I agree, and we do have a tentative plan that we'd like to present when we have our ducks in a row, so to speak. It wouldn't be a comprehensive walk, but it would be a very nice walk. We don't have the money to create, you know, the infrastructure necessary to make the entire loop, which we walked this winter. One of the things I wanted to point out, and one of the constraints on what I consider a natural entrance to the park is the snow, and if people want to utilize this trail in the wintertime, one of the ideas was to possibly put handicap parking spot, one or two. I haven't talked to the homeowner yet, so this is not something I really want to talk about, but I would say that if we could get the snow to be moved over to the, to the side of the, where it would drain off into the valley, that'd be one option that we talked about, and that would allow for people to utilize it in the wintertime and allow handicap-only parking on the east side of Sunset. That's just an idea. Put drainage onto it, it might work, may not, might be too expensive.
The only parking spot available be a handicap parking spot?
Would be one or two handicap spots. Now, I wanted to talk to the homeowners before I made a public statement on that, but that's an idea that I, we'd come up with. So yeah, we're getting ideas together, and now we're at the public input stage.
Well, I think it's a very appropriate first steps, and I would like to motion that council adopt this plan so that the Tree Board can continue to work on this.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, my comment in Phase Three is that I would not approve of their exploring a trail.
I don't think there's enough information, but I wanted to ask, has the Tree Board reached out to the University Athletics Department? Because they have another 20 or so acres of land. Do we know what they're going to be doing with their acreage that we could, you know, leverage off of or work with? Otherwise, it's summertime, there are a lot of residents out of the city, they're traveling and away, and I would feel more comfortable that as soon as school started, resume formalities on this policy question of adopting conservation easement or not. I don't oppose for you guys to gather the information. I think information and reviewing it is important, but to sit and to motion conservation easement adoption, I think that needs policy, residential, community input, and I don't think that's enough, and especially during the summer, I just don't feel comfortable. It just doesn't look well with residents. I think we need to let them-
I actually saw the-
And take input and not necessarily take it slow. I don't know of any developments that is down the pike. I don't know of any sales that are scheduled to take place on Swisher Track. I don't know that we're going to be, we don't even have the money to do much on Swisher Track. So I'm comfortable accepting tonight's information, but not doing anything with it until the public is better aware and better educated with the stake.
To your first question, Sylvia, I actually saw the campus arborist for the University of Iowa this morning, and he, they, that's the department that would be, you know, in charge if the university was to do anything with their portion of the woods, and they've not heard anything yet, and they don't anticipate hearing anything.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. You don't use the microphone?
And they don't anticipate hearing anything for quite some time. So I don't think we should wait for them. I mean, that's-
I appreciate your work. The order that I, guess I had in my mind, and I'm curious to hear if this is a bad order, but I was hoping first we would be roughing out trails, controlling weeds, addressing, and this is something to bring up with Josiah, but addressing further the ends of the roads and the safety issues. I don't know if you noticed at the end of like Sunset, it drops off. When Virginia and I were over there, we thought there might be erosion underneath the street that actually has caused the street to fall and crack a little bit. I like the idea of proposed, you know, the proposed signs, and I think if, you know, if you guys brought even, I mean, I would be ready to approve all those things. I agree with the conservation easement. I mean, that is a big thing. I'm okay with it being looked into now. I just, you know, that would be something that we, I think we would really need to have a lot of public input on, because that's potentially taking that property out of, you know, city use and other ways for the indefinite future. And so I think that's a big thing, but I think looking into it now is good. So I don't know, I want to make sure, I guess, I understand what we're talking about approving, but I would like, I mean, I was hoping as quickly as possible to get those roughed-out trails going, you know, and to get the weeds under control. I know we talked about the goat situation last year, or maybe it was early this year. I mean, I'm in favor of all those things, including the conservation easement, to the extent we're just, at this point, exploring what information, how we want to, you know, clearly propose it to the public so they know exactly what we're suggesting. And so those are my thoughts.
Each of those things, though, is one major-
Policy issue.
Policy issue, yeah. And certainly the trails are, I mean, like I have just expressed, those are critical. I mean, and that's going to be a huge amount of money, because it's not going to fly unless it's ADA acceptable.
I think we can rough out trails, though, without saying this is going to be the final trail forever.
But you can't have people in there because of the liability issue.
I think you can have wood chip trails. I mean, we can-
I don't agree at all, and that's why I asked Steve to look into it. I'm not, I'm not ready to approve. I think that we need to explore all these things, but I'm-
And I guess that's the point, is that we have-
Just a minute, Virginia's talking right now. So Virginia, Virginia is talking right now. Virginia, can you-
Adopting this plan does not give the Tree Board permission to go enact a conservation easement on themselves, like by themselves. We are saying, please continue doing this research and work for us.
I just want to be, yeah, we'd want to be really clear that that's, because I, you know, I do have that concern. But I, I mean, with the, with the roughed-out trails, just as an example, I mean, I think Virginia's done a great job. I mean, you're out there in the winter with flags. I mean, I just get concerned, we're going to find ourselves a year since you, you know, were, you started this, or more, and still not have anything really done. So I just want to-
Sort of like Triangle Park.
I just really want to have a good grasp on what we're saying. You know, this was kind of my list. I'm not saying this needs to be the way we approach it. I'm just saying, I'm asking, I guess, how does that jive with what your vision of moving forward is on this? Because I just don't want it to be another one of those deals where we, just month after month goes by and nothing actually can be done, because you don't feel like you have authority. When you've done so much, you're out walking the trails, I know this winter. So what are your thoughts in how we really move forward?
I think that there is a very natural trail at the end of Sunset, moving out to the western overlook, where there could be a beautiful place to have a bench, and it would be, I think, accessible to ADA. I'm thinking about people such as my father and Carla, to be able to get out there. Now, I don't know if it'd be this year or next, because we're moving slowly, and we want to be good stewards of the small amount of money we have, and capitalize on these grants that will be coming hopefully in perhaps next year, if we can get that done. This has been our third meeting, right before this meeting, it was our third meeting, and we've made some progress, but it's, you know, I think that if we can get more educated on what we need to do for the base of the trail, and get something started, and then, which would not negate putting any other substrate, but at least moving forward to get out there for a couple hundred yards, to get us moving forward. But I came to you, I want to digress a little bit. I came to you, we came to you asking for signage, approval for three signs at the beginning of the three natural entrances to the Swisher Track.
And this is the dogs and the unleash and dawn till dusk?
No smoking.
No smoke.
Down to dusk, dogs unleash, all the things that all of the other parks have, combined into one sign with a, like that, that type of a sign.
No litter.
You know, I don't know what the, I'm going to guess $250 each sign. I'm going to throw that out there.
Why don't you just, I'm sure that, you know, you could get the exact figures from-
And that's our intent in coming here today, to present to you the cost of three signs to get that done. We can at least all agree on that, and then we can move forward to have something, you know, for some sort of progress.
Sounds good to me. If you come to the next meeting with signs, I mean, I'm not, I'm just speaking for myself, but if you came to the next meeting with signs, you know, an idea of what the, your suggestion for the actual trail is going to be, what the first step to get to that trail would be, you know, I saw the point about the weeds, and, you know, if you've explored that fully, that's great. I just, I didn't know, we had talked about the-
I want to make a quick comment on that. Emily Swihart, who was really fantastic, very knowledgeable, we went out there and she was pointing out some things. We really, there's a lot of garlic out there, and goats wouldn't be appropriate. That would obviously identify helpful. She goes, yeah, goats, you don't need goats. What you need is, go ahead.
We have, we have it at the, at the end of this, you know, there would be a potential Boy Scout project. The problem with something like garlic mustard is goats don't take care of it. You have to pull it up and put it in a bag. Otherwise, the seeds will spill, and you'll still have it year after year. So you have to, that's something that's an invasive species, it can completely drown out all other fauna on the floor of the wooded area. So those types of things, you have to, you know, take into consideration. I would also add, you know, the things with like, you know, the signs, we could come back to you with, you know, an idea of like, you know, what the estimate cost would be, and also a bit more information about what our best path forward, or more information about the conservation easement issue. Again, this is not etched in stone. This is just to give you an idea of a blueprint of what we have going on, and then also more information about what would be the best laid plans for the trail, and what steps we could take to put a trail down, and then to put something that's more ADA accessible.
Sounds good. One, I guess one point I would make about the signs, I get a little concerned, especially when I think about the end of Sunset, that if we put signs up that say, you know, rules for basically entrance, but you have kind of a drop-off there, you know, that we're kind of, you know, in a sense, almost inviting people to enter when it may not be safe at this point.
So do we need to instruct Josiah to get that void filled, basically? I mean, I think that would be an appropriate thing to do, as soon as possible, too, right?
Maybe, maybe an estimate, you know, as to what it would cost. I don't know, and it might be jacking, I don't know, mudjacking, however you would, if the street has fallen a little bit. I don't know if you do that with streets like you do with normal sidewalks or smaller sidewalks.
It'd be difficult there, because it's right at the end of mudjacking, as it gets underneath.
Use the mic.
Oh, sorry. Thought we were just hanging out.
I guess you were hanging out.
I can take a look at it. Mudjacking probably won't work. We might need to do something else there.
True. But I think an estimate to make, you know, both of those sides, I don't know that we'll necessarily ever need to have a main entrance or not. I mean, I defer to, you know, we'll see how that goes, but making any kind of main entrance or entrance that seems appealing, where we're going to put signs, making it, you know, kind of a smooth, you know, jump-off point. And that's why, too, I think getting the trails roughed in, just as, you know, we have in that path that goes off Prospect would be-
So I think that's a step we need to get taken care of, but I don't know that that's something these guys need to be working on.
Okay, I just, as it relates to signs, though, I don't know that we want to be posting signs if there's a big drop-off where we'd post them.
So they're going to bring back next month, ideas of signage. All right.
Do we need consensus, I guess, or do we have consensus that Josiah can look into?
Well, right now, we have the first on the table.
Oh, the first, okay. Second?
What, can you repeat the motion? I don't.
To adopt the Tree Board's recommendations and begin the necessary work is what I had written down. So I don't know if you want to rescind and start over, or-
Well, there wasn't a second, so I wasn't-
Well, that was my, I guess I would kind of like it restated. I withdraw my second.
I can withdraw my motion.
Okay, both withdrawn.
I guess, I don't know if you want to word it, but-
Does the council agree to withdraw this? I mean, that's okay with every, just withdraw the motion and the second, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, good.
So I think the motion that we'd want is to give the Tree Board direction to pursue the ideas in their report.
That's better. Second?
That's a motion and a second.
I think we're just hanging out.
I think that's just direction. But all in favor, say aye for direction.
Aye.
Aye.
Sylvia, do you want to vote?
I'm going abstain.
Okay. Okay, so four yes and one abstain, for direction, for signage.
Pursuing further direction.
Pursuing-
Pursuing their ideas or whatever. What was it? It's doing nothing, but-
They're looking, I think they're wanting to have some, you know, direction to move forward, get sign quotes, you know, pursue these ideas, and that's, is that helpful? But I would also, if we're done with that motion, I'd like to, I guess, make whatever motion's necessary to give Josiah authority to look at those, you know, both streets, Prospect, I don't know, down by your house, if there's any issues, but at least Sunset, I think-
There's no broke, nothing broken, no holes.
Prospect, too, the end of Prospect.
I think it's mainly my pro-
Could you move back to the snow pictures?
Sure.
Because it, there's work to be done on those areas. You're absolutely correct. Especially, you know, if we're going to move forward, if we're going to move forward, we need work done there. Shored up gravel. Right there, at that point, at the end of Sunset, there's a picture of Sunset with about a six-foot pile of snow, which prevents someone from going into the park from that, from that point.
Is that a problem, Josiah, in the winter? Have you had reports from, you know, previous tenants? or anything about the roadway down there?
I mean, we have Mark Phillips here. Like, Mark, is there a different way to plow that? That would not, that would leave a clear spot?
I'm not sure where he's going to put it.
Right. I'm not, I don't know how you could plow that differently.
I mean-
They're going to put it in a people's-
And that's what I was, and that's what, where the idea was spawned of, what if we were to put two parking spots to the east, right by the no dumping allowed, right in front of that? And that's something that Josiah would be able to be, to have some insight in. Is it possible? Because the cliff, or the, the topography may not easily accommodate that.
Two, if there's an entrance, I think it'd be nice if, if the snow were on the right and people could get in the left, because there's that open space also that people may want to use.
Or we just-
I would encourage you to ask Josiah to look into the possibility of creating a place to push the snow. It also would be utilized as a place for handicap-only parking, as, as, as an idea moving forward.
And so, Nick, did I hear you make a motion?
Do you need a motion to kind of look at that, or what would you like to-
We can do it that way. I mean, you can, then we know we have council consensus.
Okay, yeah, see if we have consensus. So I, I would move to, to request, to ask Josiah to look into the, I guess, my first issue was, look into the end of Sunset and Prospect, and, and look at the drainage and the erosion, just what repairs need to be made.
Okay.
And the cost of those repairs.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Dottie, did you vote? You said aye. Sylvia, did you vote?
No, I'm abstaining because I can't hear what's happening, so I can't take a vote on information. I'm not here.
Okay. And so Sylvia abstained.
Yeah. So there, the city does not have a specific zone for public spaces or parks, but this property is in the R1 zone, and one of the permitted uses specifically includes public parks and public playgrounds.
Thank you.
So you wouldn't need to do anything with zoning.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next month. And so, we'll finish up with Josiah. You had an engineer report.
So I submitted a written report, and I'll touch on a couple items from the written report. One of them was-
I'm getting there.
I know Mark was going to be here, but I did include a map based on some possible changes to the snow removal. What did you call it? Responsibilities, I guess, between the City of Iowa City and Mark for the City of University Heights. So there's no agenda item tonight. It was more, I just wanted to get it in front of you and give you a little bit of background. And as I wrote in my report, this stemmed from a discussion between the new street superintendent in Iowa City, and Mark and myself, and Mayor Fromm. Basically, Iowa City does snow removal on Melrose now, because they use Melrose to traverse back and forth across Iowa City. As you know, the Lytham Development is in Iowa City. That's the, and the loop on the end of Lemur and Olive, and also the cul-de-sac on Marietta. But the only way in and out is through, obviously, University Heights, so the, I, I think the distilled summary was, there's some areas where Iowa City and University Heights are sort of doing double duty, or trying to avoid each other. And maybe there's an easier, more efficient way for everybody to work together and sort of get it done. And, yeah, so that, that map that's up essentially was what we talked about, and that would be that Iowa City would take care of Melrose as they're going back and forth on Melrose with their trucks. I think Mark, they, they go through there now with their plows down. Sometimes it's sometimes up, but they definitely don't sand.
They don't, they don't put any material down.
Material down, right. So the discussion was, maybe Iowa City starts to plow Melrose as they're coming through back and forth, as well as add material and sort of take care of it. And then, and then in exchange, we would take on, like, the loop at Lemur, since we use it anyway, the cul-de-sac on Marietta, since we use it, because we have to get turned around and come back anyway. And then the proposal also was to maybe consider including Tower Court, since it's right there off George Street, which is in University Heights, the access through to it. So that, that was sort of the discussion. And again, it's not an agenda item tonight for, for approval of direction, but I think at this point, I would, like I said, I wanted to get in front of you. I'd be open to any questions that you guys have, not just right here on the spot, but some other thoughts you have. And then I have been talking with Mark on how that would affect our contract and agreement, so.
I guess my comments are, I don't know why we would add Tower Court. And then, how do we handle, you know, from time to time, we get complaints, like, oh, the plow scraped my, whatever. So how do we determine, like, if it was our plow, or if it was the City of Iowa City plow, and what sort of, like, how are we going to handle that situation when that comes up?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. There's definitely some things like that.
I think Tower Court was added because they would be doing Mel-, I, I think it was just a fairness thing. They thought you could add Tower Court too.
And it's off of George.
And it's off of George, and it's not that long.
And I think the last point I would make is that the sense of the meeting was also, maybe we, we try this and see how it goes and see how it works, maybe, before it becoming like a cast in stone, like, change.
Seems like a good idea.
Maybe, maybe this helps, maybe this is easier, maybe it helps provide better coverage to University Heights and cleaner Melrose, you know, more frequently and safer. And so, that's, that's the extent of what I was going to-
Paul wanted to make a comment. Can you come up to the microphone, Paul?
Paul Moore, 1,000, 1,006 Melrose Avenue. I'm always thinking ahead of you guys, but with the street widening, in another couple of years, it'll be interesting what you're going to do with the snow. Right now, we got the 2010 eight-foot wide sidewalk, and snow's getting plowed up onto that. And with the abundance of snow this year, there were a number of storm drains that got plowed shut. And somebody's got to be responsible to keep those open for drainage. And at the same time, I don't know if you're going to use the bike lane to store snow, or where you're going to put this. And if you have two different people doing two different things, you got to consider this, because it's going to involve an inloader to get rid of snow, just to keep the sidewalks open. Because the curb is right up to the sidewalks, or will be soon, on Melrose going west. And Mark was real good to come over and open up drains once we identified them, but nobody had a map or a drawing or paid any attention to that, until we had the thaw, and then water started backing up every place. And so, there's a lot of details with different people sharing things, and who's going to be responsible to open the drains up, because they just got, like all the sidewalks, were solid packed with ice. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, Paul.
Mark, do you want to comment on that, since you're here and we're lucky to have you here and at this time?
Every year's going to be a little bit different. So last year, we saw twice as much snow as you've seen before. The drains were an issue, but once we were able to identify with Josiah where they were, where we, what we needed to do, it's just something that we'll have to make another turn at, or, you know, pay attention to the weather as to what needs to be done. If it stays cold, it's really not an issue, but we, we got that rain that was in the middle of the winter that caused quite a bit of problems for everybody. But we got them opened up. As far as the, working with the City of Iowa City on Melrose, it's, it's an even trade as to what they're doing. And I, I kind of want to see what, what their scope is and where they are. And so that's why we agreed to try, you know, for a year. I have a feeling that we, we open up your intersections a little bit wider than what they do already in Iowa City, and we push them back to the corners. They typically just make straight line patterns. We're actually in the traffic pattern. Cleaning up so that there's a sidewalk, you know, your sidewalk access is across Sunset on both sides there at Melrose is, is planable. Same thing down by, where it crosses on George and cross there. So I anticipate we're still going to have to be inside there. It's just that if, if the City of Iowa City is correct, and the number of times that they're going to be using it as a go-through, and actually be telling their guys to have their equipment down and putting material down, I would assume it would be better than what we're limited to, as far as budget and the number of times we're being there. I'm curious to see as to how it works, because a lot of times, we're on both ends, and Mel-, and Melrose is done on our priority one, and we're done with Melrose, and spinning around at their fire station, and the rest of Melrose isn't done. So it's just something that we'll have to see how it works. And we started doing Lemur and the other streets just as a courtesy, because I do see the guys that are down there, and it's ridiculous just for us to pick up our equipment when we're driving through. So it's just one of those things that we've been doing in the past, and adding that other street, it's, it's really not that big a deal. Their biggest concern was if we hit a mailbox, who's responsible? And after driving the street, there is no mailboxes there, so there is no concern there. And if, if there's an issue with a car that's parked there, and, you know, if we hit it, obviously we're responsible for, if there is an issue with a car being tagged, of which they have no, they do allow parking on that street, but we'll just have to eye this thing.
So you guys would still keep Melrose in your regular loop?
We have, because we keep, yeah, we're still going to do Melrose.
And so, we would just maybe be getting a few extra passes.
Right. So Melrose is going to end up being cleaner more often than what it is. And that's typically where we see the police force calling us, that we have an issue at the top of Melrose and Sunset, if it being icy, and, and people trying to take off and go. So it's just, it's going to be more, more going through, and it can't hurt. So I just thought we, I was agreeable to try it. It doesn't cost us any difference as to what, what we're doing already.
Are there any questions for Mark? Thank you so much.
Okay, so I'll probably bring that back to you guys, but that's sort of the lay of the land on that issue. The next thing I had is the, your stormwater permit renewal.
Oh, yes.
This needs to be turned in by November 2nd. So again, it's not an agenda item. I don't know if you need an agenda item to take action, but Mayor, you just need to sign the application form to renew the permit process, to get it started. And the city also needs to authorize the permit check for the next five-year permit, and that's $1,250. So I'll probably leave this with you in your mailbox. And if it takes an agenda item, we can add it on next month, no problem.
Right. And we'll do the 1250 permit check then?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Wow, five years goes fast.
Last item is the follow-up on the city sidewalk repair discussion item. I'm passing around a couple maps we put together. So this was talked about in a special meeting in, end of May. So some of the, the direction then was, we wanted to focus on figuring out which sidewalks do people use, you know, where do people walk, is sort of the one criteria. And then the second type of criteria was to look at the inspections that we did last year, and focus in on specifically sidewalk panels that had vertical, like, trip hazard issues, and then also panels that had potential drainage or ponding issues. So the, the first map on here is right from your vision report. It's the, the diagram that says preferred walking routes. How often people walk, and where did they go? It's kind of difficult to see in this map exactly what was going on, so if you turn to the second map, this is the same data from your visioning report from the Iowa State GIS office. They're the ones who put the maps together. But instead, they broke it down into, like, 10 categories, instead of just three main ones. So you can really start to see where those most frequent walking routes were. And this is based on, I think it was 120 or so survey, people who responded to the survey during the vision process. So that's the, the source of the data. But you can see on that second map, the dark blue, where was the most, where the routes were that most people said they walked. Red is next, and then dark green. And I think it, it's kind of surprising, some of the results, but it does highlight, I think, what we've always sort of thought, is that, you know, outside of Melrose, people tend to walk up Kosher to get up to Sunset, and on George and Highland, sort of as the cut through from the south side of town to the east side of town. And the next two, next maps are, this is based, directly based off the inspection reports from 2018 in this quadrant of the city. These are all properties that had a, like a trip hazard identified on at least one sidewalk panel in front of their house. Again, they're sort of centered around, as we suspected, Kosher and Highland, and a little bit of George. And then the next one, and the orange, the orange properties were, they had at least one panel that had a potential drainage or ponding issue, focused in some of the same areas, which again, is, I think, what we expected. It's got some of the oldest sidewalks in town. And the last one just shows you, this is every property that had any type of repair marked during that, that process. So based on that data, looking at where people walk, at least based on the vision, visioning report data, and then looking at those Type A and Type B, I'm going to be focusing in on essentially Highland Drive, is probably the number one section, and then Kosher, I think, number two. So my next action item here, which I haven't done yet, is to now go walk with Lisa and Dottie on these highlighted sections of Highland and Kosher, and determine if they are, in fact, like the data shows, based from the reports of ponding and trip hazards.
And so you're going to do that in the next couple weeks?
Yep.
As a plan? Okay.
And so what you're going to get, this, I've done one of these sections already, is basically a breakdown of anticipated costs to replace the sidewalk in each of those sections.
Sorry, what is that? Do we have a copy of that? Or do you have only one?
You, you don't. I just did the first one. That was the Highland, the Highland Curve, which we actually talked about at the meeting. So, any, any questions or?
Nope. Keep proceeding with that. That sounds good. Thank you. Oh, maybe I'm gonna, Sylvia?
Yes, please, I'm here.
Um, my battery's down to 10%, so we'll have, oh, I got a plug in. I didn't know to charge- I didn't know to charge my phone. Okay, we should be okay. I hope. It doesn't seem to. It's plugged in, right? I'm just, it didn't make that. Okay. So are you done with your report?
I am.
Okay, perfect. We're done with, um, with that. And so let's see, we'll go on to Mayor's report. And, uh, I sent you, forwarded you an email from Stan Lawverman today. He's resigning his position as Housing Inspector for University Heights in a couple of weeks. And he couldn't attend tonight because he had an Iowa City meeting and he won't be able to attend the July 15th meeting. And so that's a special meeting on Monday. I'm thinking, uh, council shouldn't continue to meet that night without a housing inspector. So I'll look into, uh, talking about, you know, finding another housing inspector for the city. I'll look into that. And Dottie said she'd help me look in it, into it also.
So that meeting's canceled?
Louise, I'd like to be involved in that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now we'll go to the hotel project update and Greg Stiltner is here tonight. Thank you for being patient, Greg.
Can I ask a quick question? So the Monday hearing, is it officially canceled, July 15th hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Um, just real quick, the G O P E R S, the drilling, um, it should be done this week. And then we're starting to pour concrete for the footings next week. So we are excited. So.
Are there any questions? Okay, well, thank.
I forgot one quick question. Is the, uh, is the nine, the house off Melrose, is that, is the house off Melrose being demoed this month as well?
Yeah, I guess they, um, demoed the garage today. I wasn't there, wasn't, I was out of town. And then, um, the houses should be coming down this week probably.
Okay.
So.
Then what happens with that space?
What's that?
Then what happens with that space?
Just gets grass planted and made up to mow and look nice for now.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all, I, I think that's, I think there's a proposed sign, uh, somewhere over there, but we'll go look at that. When it gets closer to time to do that, but yeah.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. Uh, and then you might want to stay around. Steve's going to give his report.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, can I ask one, you are not going to cut down the four trees that are there, correct?
I'm not going to cut down the trees.
Right. I just want to make sure. You're going to leave the trees that are on that 901 Melrose property?
I.
They're coming down, aren't they?
No, yet. They, there's been some discussion of cutting trees down because they, they get, they keep getting chopped up and, um, by the power company and they look, you know, I think they look bad, but, um, I was, uh, it's been a discussion. There's been no, at this point, there's been no decision to cut the trees down, no.
Okay.
Okay. So now Steve's going to start his report.
Thanks. So the first item, there's a resolution 1932 approves the preliminary and final subdivision plats for U L P, first addition to the city of University Heights. Uh, this, I tried to address this in the legal report and documents that were sent with it, as well as some that were sent, uh, today. The zoning commission considered the plats last night after a hearing from Josiah and from me in terms of engineering and legal compliance with the city's subdivision ordinance. I guess I'm not going to go much further into it unless people have questions or want me to. But, uh, that resolution is before you concerning the subdivision plats.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Nick. Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
Okay, second by Sylvia. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Herbold.
I.
Casada.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carried.
Okay.
Next item is, uh, I made, I asked to have this made as your first consideration again of ordinance 239. So the city entered into a refuse contract with Johnson County Refuse and, and, um, this is an effort to make sure that our ordinances are consistent with, with the services provided in the, um, in the, uh, contract with Johnson County Refuse. There were a couple of changes to some definitional things made from the last, uh, version. That's why I asked that this be first consideration again of ordinance 239.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Nick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Casada.
Can we pause for a second? Had you, I think.
I wanted to say something. Um, Steve, I noticed that you don't have, um, any exclusions or carve-outs for, for residential composting other than yard waste. And I just wanted to clarify that people do compost household residential use items like watermelon rinds, for example. So how does that operate in this ordinance?
I'd have to look at that Sylvia. I thought, so it does, composting doesn't have to be in the ordinance for, uh, Johnson County Refuse to provide the service. So I want to make that point. But I, I, let me take a look at, uh, it talks, it does talk about composting, um, and using yard waste bags.
Right. Cause that was expressly provided in the ordinance. The language is, is clear. Um, however, it was.
In the.
Addressing residential composting. It was drawing it into one of the other defined terms that has to be taken care of. So I, I think there's little room for people to work with. I just want to be on the record noting that you didn't make that an exception for carve-out for, for what a lot of residents do do, especially those with big backyards. And that is they do both. They do residential and they do, um, backyard, um, refuse, no, backyard, uh, greens, you know, whatever they're, grass clippings, plus leaf clippings and leaves.
239.05 talks about, shall be composted on the premises or placed in yard waste bags.
And that's also the place where it talks about the two, um, two bundles of brush.
With respect to non-residential composting items. And that's what I picked up on. So I, I want to make sure that, you know, the rule isn't outlawing it, but the rule isn't providing for it either. And I'm in the position that, like, I think we need to encourage composting. And if people want to commingle their yard, um, yard recycling items for composting, that's fine. Plus the kitchen scraps is what I'm getting to.
I'm, I'm not sure I follow you. You mean for pickup or for composting on their own property?
On their, on their own property. And I can't remember, uh.
It says specifically that you may, may do that, but there is a mistake in 239.05 that Lisa caught, which is it says two bundles of brush and it should be one bundle of brush.
Yeah.
It should be three feet long and no more than 36 inches around, not four feet long and 40 pounds or less. Can we make that?
And Lisa brought that to my attention and I talked to Steve Smith. So this afternoon, he wasn't in a position to review what I was presenting. So this, you may have another first consideration next month.
Okay.
But thanks. And I may need to get those specs from you, uh, uh, Lisa, Virginia, if I could.
Okay, so, uh, we're going to consider this next month. First consideration next month.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right. And I think the section that I'm looking at has to deal with the definition of garbage. But anyhow, I will have to look at it again. This were quick notes that I wrote because this is an issue that we have. Several residents that are composting from their kitchen out to their backyard in addition to their garden contributions to their compostment. And I don't want that to come under question. The, the city practices them to permit it.
It does not come into question. You got that.
I think.
Right there.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
I think what she's, might be looking at is that it gives you, like, tells you how to treat yard waste, like she was saying, but it's not saying what to necessarily do with compost.
Shall be composted on the premise or placed.
It's talking about yard waste. It's not talking about compost from the kitchen.
Other solid waste accumulated.
Definition note that says garbage. It's a defined term. And this term garbage later on appears in another operating paragraph of the ordinance regarding, uh, on, on, on the premise composting or having it, uh, carried away through the service.
So should we change yard waste to compostables?
Right. So I just want to preserve.
Change garbage too, but sometimes garbage is going to be.
Have that choice that if they want to do some backyard composting with residential items, you know, uh, watermelon rinds.
Do you have that Steve? He's got that. So he'll, he'll work on that for next month. Okay. And then what else do you have, Steve?
Excuse me, is 239 then tabled and we're withdrawing the motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing it next month.
So the last thing on my, um, uh, report was a consideration, uh, second consideration of ordinance number 240, which concerns use of right-of-way and some of the small technology, small cell technology issues that have been discussed. Representatives of Verizon were here a couple of months ago to talk about those things. Uh, Sarah and Jessica are here from Verizon again tonight. If anyone has any questions about, um, the ordinance, uh, 240 represents some changes to the last amendment, uh, that the council made to this general ordinance area requested by Verizon. Uh, the council adopted this for the first reading, this, these particular changes for the first reading in June. Uh, this is your second consideration. Verizon did ask if this, if the council would consider collapsing the second, third readings tonight.
Do you, do you guys want to say anything on the changes? Talk on these most recent changes? I mean, I don't know if the council.
Right.
It's 215. Is that it? Oh, okay, Kyle. Sorry. Yep, right there. I see. Oh, there it is. Okay, so second consideration of ordinance number 240 is before you.
A motion adoption?
Well, I think, I mean, if, if they want to consolidate, yeah, we'd have to do that first.
You do have to do it first, if that's what you want to do.
Rescind my motion?
If nobody seconds it, it dies.
I didn't hear it. Let's just keep going.
I mean, so I'm just telling you, if nobody seconds it, it dies because of no second.
I'm not even going to get.
In terms of asking for this, I, I mean, it seems like these are not, in a sense substantive changes that we're kind of tweaking some things again.
And move to collapse.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Dottie moved to collapse.
I have a question and that goes to, um, uh, the aesthetics, the, uh, the, uh, what's up with the maintenance of co-locators? What does Verizon have to say about, you know, co-locators that aren't Verizon-controlled? They come on to their area. Will they be maintaining that relationship? Or will the city have to track down, figure out who those, um, co-locators are? I was surprised to see that, you know, there isn't a, a gatekeeper of control over the maintenance of, 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 of equipment that comes on to that, uh, to that pole. Generally, if it's a Verizon pole, it'll be Verizon who will manage, um, the access of any other parties that come on to the co-location area. And I just want to save the city the trouble and the due diligence of having to track down third, second, and fourth, uh, co-locators that come on. So Steve, in your conversations, what has Verizon said about maintaining, um, control over the co-location area?
I don't think I've discussed that with Verizon, but there are representatives here and they may be in a position to speak to that. I don't know if you are or not.
Is it their pole? Is it Verizon's pole?
I think that's what, uh, what Sylvia's asking about.
Yeah, I just want to know.
I think they answered that.
We don't want our city having to track down co-locators. Verizon can manage.
Okay, yeah, we got it.
I, I think, I think Sylvia, I think they, let me, let me try the answer and see if I'm right or not. I think when, when we talked about that, if you invest, if I'm understanding her question, if you invest in a poll or invest in a structure like that, that becomes a city, that could become city property. Is that right? You, you've in a sense gift that to the city? You did it. Okay.
So does the city maintain it then? As long as it's city property? Yes. So if you have another, so given that, another, another entity could also join on that pole, correct?
Uh, good evening. First of all, thanks for having us, Steve, Chris, Josiah, council members, Mayor Prom. Uh, my name is Sarah Muley. I'm with Verizon Wireless. Address is 4002 South 149th Circle in Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. I'm here with my colleague.
Hi, Jessica DeWalt. I'm based out of Schaumburg, Illinois. I'm not sure of the address.
Um, I believe the question from council member Casada, and please correct me if I'm inaccurate, was, um, what are the specified maintenance duties when multiple carriers potentially would co-locate on the same pole? Um, I'm going to break down that question to two parts. Uh, one is expressly a city, um, preference for carriers to co-locate on the same pole. So the way that the ordinance is, um, outlined right now, it expresses a preference for co-location. But to that point that we were alluding to earlier, um, a city municipal-owned pole would be city property. Carriers would be responsible insofar as their equipment is concerned. Most of that would presumably be worked out in the permitting process and there would be, um, permitting mechanisms for, by which a, a permit, permitter lists their contact information and could be notified by the, um, responsible permit head, Josiah presumably, um, to notify if there was any equipment issues that needed to be tended to per carrier. But the pole as an appurtenance in your right-of-way itself would be city property. Your ordinance doesn't expressly dictate maintenance obligations. Um, so I would also, uh, explain that the council is obviously free to amend its ordinance in the future if it has concerns that, um, need to be specified in the ordinance.
And just to add on to that, each, um, so while the pole would be city-owned, the, the small cell, each small cell has a N O C number. So if anything happens to that small cell that's on the city pole, you can call the N O C number. It's monitored 24 hours. You'll get ahold of somebody and they can address the specific concerns about the equipment on your pole.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, no, that was the one that I, that I thought was most, most important. So we could, we'll have to think of amending this later. Okay, thank you.
So is council interested in collapsing the vote or?
Motion to collapse.
I'm, you know, I'm kind of, um, I, I really would hate to see a collapse only because that is a, an important tool that should only be used for extraordinary circumstances. And I, I think this is just another routine ordinance that's happening and we should probably keep with the prior practices of the city where we, we take one reading at a time unless it is extenuating circumstances. So unless Verizon has a, a number of small cells that are lined up to start being placed on, on, you know, city property in the next few days, I, I need to hear what, what's extenuating. Want me to vote to collapse?
I heard Virginia.
I heard Dottie and Virginia.
Are you saying something?
Motion to collapse. I thought I heard Virginia.
I, Dottie actually did it first.
Okay.
I made the motion.
Did you want to speak on that? The exigency involved or the, the need for collapsing?
Um, I would just say that, um, anytime that we apply to any municipality, um, it takes planning and due diligence and our A and E firms to collaborate and, um, gather information. So as of this, uh, public hearing, I don't have any knowledge, one way or the other, of our readiness, if you will. I do know there's a need in this area. I don't have a knowledge of readiness of applications.
I guess that's why I kind of lean on the side of collapsing, just because I, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit. These aren't huge changes and there is, in my opinion, like, as we were talking about before the meeting, there is, seems to be need, um, in the community if we can get a little more coverage in some spots.
That's a second.
So I thought there's not a second already?
Dottie first.
You made the motion.
Your second then?
So Dottie made a motion to collapse. And then who made the second?
Virginia.
Virginia. Okay. Okay. Now we're going to vote on the collapse. So all in favor? No, we do a roll call for that, too? Okay, roll call, vote.
Casada.
No.
Maher.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Carried.
40, 41. And now it's the second and third consideration of ordinance number 240.
So moved.
Motion by Virginia.
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Maher.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Carried.
Okay.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for waiting.
Okay, we have the, Chris, your city clerk report.
Right. So obviously, we are in the beginning of the rental permit process, so I will be giving you updated information beginning the August meeting. Obviously, my report needs to be amended a little bit more because we will not be having the July 15th meeting. Happy to answer any questions about this. One thing I did forget to put on my report, we have received notification from the state that we need to have another either audit or an examination. So I'm looking at council for some direction. We did the RFP last year in Crown Logi, and Olson, as you remember, came in at the lowest bid. Do you want me to reach out to them? Any thoughts, suggestions, ideas?
I think since we just did this last year, we're going to spend more on your time than we stand to save. So I think it's something that should be checked periodically, but we just checked it. I don't see a need to do it again.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, what are we going through again, Chris? Is this in the, in your report? Because I don't recall seeing a follow-up and audit.
That's correct. I said that I forgot to put it in my report, and I'm asking for council direction. We have received notification from the state that we have to have either a city examination or an audit. I anticipate, and I said this last time, I anticipate that going forward, this will be a yearly occurrence because we will be having budgets over $1 million, I would assume, more than two years in a row. It will just be an ongoing expense.
Right. Typically, the best practice in many corporate departments is to leave your awarded RFP in place for three years and then bid it out on, well, bid it out on year three so that you start a new cycle.
I'm comfortable with that.
So I would recommend that we stay with the RFP award it in this past calendar year, but definitely note for the record that a new RFP needs to be issued in year three to start a new cycle. And that is used as a best practice in many places where procurement departments, and many of these going out.
So I would say last year was year one, and this is year two, and next year is year three, and then.
Correct. So I'm seeing nodding of heads to continue with Crown Logi and Olson? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Please mind, I'm speaking only for my nodding.
Your nodding of your hand. The other item I have is the liquor license renewal for Maggie's Pizza. I am waiting on one item from the fire marshal, so this will be a contingent approval if you so desire.
So moved. Contingent approval?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Virginia and second by Nick. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries 5-0.
That's it for me.
Treasurers report. Lori submitted this afternoon the warrants. Did you want to speak? Do you have a few more?
I have one more. It's $192.84 to FirstNet, who apparently is AT&amp;T for mobile data terminal access.
Oh, an AT&amp;T bill.
Yeah, we don't have Verizon anymore, so.
Okay. So the warrants were sent to you. Are there any objection to pay in the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Are there any questions for Lori? Thank you, Lori. We'll go on to the chief report. He circulated a report this evening. Thank you.
Sorry about it being so late. I'm not going to go through every item unless there's questions on the items. I would like to, under staffing, make a quick comment under item D about the addition of part-time officers. I've had some discussions with some of you in various capacities. The part-time officers don't cost us anything unless we use them, and then it's at a reduced cost. I mean, they're there to cover shift shortages, so instead of paying a full-time officer time and a half off of his full-time salary to cover hours that aren't staffed, we're able to pay a part-time officer $21 an hour. So it actually, it's a way for us to realize a savings and to have some extra staffing for special events such as the kickoff to Kinnick or the football game, or anything else that we need that for. So just a quick comment to part-time officers there. Item number E, or letter E, understaffing Officer Tucker. Really, from before I was even hired, during the, during discussion about interest in the position and then going through the selection and interview and conversations I've had with various council and staff members at Iowa City, or, I'm sorry, at University Heights, there it was apparent that there'd been some change, or there were people that weren't sure exactly what Officer Tucker's status was. Was he an officer? Was he a sergeant? Was he serving at administrative capacity? Was he a first-line supervisor? Bottom line is, on a department of five, I don't need a first-line supervisor to help me with supervision of staff out in the street, but what I do need, and what I think university needs, is that accountability, that responsibility. I delegate, I task Darrell with a variety of things, and it sounds like I do more than former Chief Peterson did, administrative tasks, whether that be scheduling, or whether that be liaisoning with the state on tracks. When I am unavailable, whether that's out bicycle riding, or motorcycling, or traveling to Colorado, I think that University Heights, the council, the community should have a dedicated contact, and it's not just who happens to be working today, and we're reaching out to that person, and he can make the decision for the department. It should be somebody that you're still getting a consistent message, you're still getting consistent direction, that I have confidence in, that they know what they're doing, and they know what I want done. Darrell has been functioning as a sergeant probably since before I came here, but certainly since I have been here. I went back, I went back through what documents I could find and emails I could find. He was hired to be a sergeant. He was hired at a certain salary point. There were salary adjustments for the whole department in January. Darrell did not receive that same salary adjustment that other officers did, and as a result of that salary adjustment, or I don't know, as a result of a bit coincidental to that salary adjustment, the PD was restructured, and there was no longer a sergeant position designated. July 1 of this year, there were cost of living raises that were negotiated that each officer received, with the exception of Darrell, who continued to receive the same salary that he was hired at one year ago. I just, I don't think it's fair. I'm a strong believer, and we talked about this when I was hired. I don't think that you promote somebody because they, out of sheer loyalty, you promote them because they deserve the position, because they're serving a function, because they're important to the organization, and they should be recognized and rewarded when they're serving that function. I think Darrell, I think Darrell should be a sergeant. I think that it's in the best interest of the department and the community, and I've talked a little bit with Nick about it. I haven't talked price points or salary points or anything like that, but I would like to, I would like to promote Darrell to sergeant, and I would like to give him a nominal bump in salary that I believe he should have had to start with. So I don't know.
Can the council make a motion on that? Would Nick, do you like to?
I move, I move.
Okay.
Allow you permission to move him to.
Sergeant and.
Sergeant and pay him accordingly.
Okay, motion by Dottie, second by Nick. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Appreciate your help on that. Tasks, I'm not going to go through them all. Again, you can, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them. I apologize. On the top of page three, I see a typo on item C. That really bugs me when I do that. Under item F, there's a whole list of things there that kind of summarize some talking points, the direction that University Heights is going in regards to football and partnering with University of Iowa Police Department. But item I there sums it up. Basically, university staffs their positions, they staff them in what they call strike teams, but each strike team consists of eight officers. Last year, they employed, for each football game, they employed 115 officers. University Heights had potentially five full-time employees, a chief and four officers, plus three part-time officers, so last year could field perhaps eight officers. University Heights did that on their own. University Heights paid those officers overtime or their part-time salary to come out and work the football games. University Heights officers did not cross the dotted line at the bridge into the football crowd at the stadium, nor did they go out onto Thinkbine. And any university officers that were in University Heights traveled through to staffing positions at the athletic club or out at Thinkbine, or they worked the traffic control positions here in our community to the best of their ability post-game. That's just not the way the university functions with any of the other area agencies. They actually go to other counties and other municipalities to try to get partnerships to bring people into work. I'm not quite sure what the history was here between the departments, but I've talked with their director, I've talked with one of their captains, and I talked with Lieutenant Heitch, who's their special events coordinator, and I am confident that they will provide officers to supplement our officers. They will be partnered together. It won't just be that, oh, yeah, we'll somehow supplement University Heights Police Department's income. We will work together, we will work side by side in these same strike teams or patrol units. Pre-game, we gain because we gain additional bodies, both in our community and traveling through our community. We will assist, I'm sure, by crossing over the bridge and being at the southwest corner of the stadium and some of our foot patrols. We will then travel back through Melrose. We'll be down Cozer, we'll be down Grand Avenue, we'll be out at the parking lot that was the University Athletic Club and where they will be tailgating this year. We might even be as far west as Thinkbine, but we'll be in moving positions, so they will be getting the university, the athletic club, the football fans will be getting increased public safety and increased fan experience, if you will, a positive fan experience, and University Heights will be gaining more officers in their community, moving through their community. Again, this isn't about squashing fun, but it's about making sure there's uniformed oversight and we keep the lid on it. University also feeds all of their officers. They set up, they bring people in, and they set up a grill, and they feed them at the southwest corner of the stadium. Again, University Heights before could have, the officers probably could have thrown a softball and hit them, but they couldn't partake. They now will be able to move over there and get food and refreshment as they move through the community. They, during the football game, some of our officers may be pulled across the bridge to help outside their stadium. Again, that was typically our downtime as I go and review the calls for service. Post-game, we will help staff the traffic control positions so that we will have ownership at those positions. So when there's a resident that says, I couldn't get at my, I couldn't get to my home, we'll have more firsthand knowledge of what happened. We will be at those positions. There should never be a time that access to any part of the community is cut off. There will be times when there are delays. There will be times when you may not be able to enter University Heights from Melrose traveling eastbound because they have that shut off on the other side of the bridge. Or post-game, you might, may not be able to enter from westbound because there will be a period of time that cars are going to be running westbound in both directions. But there will never be a time that University Heights is shut off, particularly the neighborhoods north of Melrose. That's tricky because you have two lanes of traffic coming out, but we will be manning the positions at Sunset and Cozer. We will be assisting in manning those positions so that there may be delays, but traffic will be stopped to allow north and southbound traffic to get in and out of your neighborhoods.
Are they still going to be directing? When you're going west on Melrose, then are they directing the traffic south like they were before, down Emerald or?
Yes. When, there will be a time post-game, and it could last as long as an hour and a half. There will be time post-game that it will be two lanes of traffic, both westbound through Melrose that will continue to the median out there, but Emerald. So traffic coming westbound on Emerald into or through University Heights will be diverted southbound onto Emerald and down to Benton, and then they can either go to Sunset and come in that way, or George and come in that way, or if they're just passing through, they can go on down to Riverside.
And people who live north of Melrose will be allowed through at Sunset and George to get to their houses, yeah?
At Sunset and.
Sure. Cozers, yeah.
Yes, Sunset and Cozer and Sunset and Melrose, we will staff those. And again, it won't be as easy as you're pulling up and I'm here, let me go. But yeah, you'll have to wait, just like you would anything else, but they will not be turned away. And they won't be told, no, you can't get in here for an hour and a half. The other thing that I brought up that they'd never thought before is, even though there's two drives to one university place, there's really only one way in. And I don't know what Jerry does for post-game and business and things like that, but I want to make sure that whether it's Jerry's business or Bar Three, or Katie's new business, or the residents of the Towers, that they're able to get in. And that's actually trickier than getting even to your neighborhood, because for them to get in, they are going to have to, I mean, probably the most direct route would be to come down Sunset, turn west, and then turn in there. But yeah, so we'll staff those. Burke Dale Court, I want to make sure staffed, too, even though I think it's only six homes there. I want to make sure that that's staffed. Now, those won't be full traffic control units, but there will be an officer there so that as needed, they can cut traffic and facilitate. So there will be delays. When you have tens of thousands of vehicles going through, there will be delays, but they'll never, there will never be a time that it's shut off. I've already talked a little bit with Paul Moore. We're going to meet, not this week. He had some things going on. I'm out of town this weekend, but next week, we're going to get together. I want to go down and see firsthand how he sets up down there. We spoke a little bit about the fire and ambulance units staging down there. I know, I think maybe when I talked to Dottie, but somebody expressed concerns about incoming ambulances to the hospital. I have less concern about that. They all know in advance. The JEC knows in advance. The hospital knows in advance. And on occasion, and it has happened, somebody that doesn't turn on the radio comes down, you know what, we'll stop traffic, we'll get them through. I'm more concerned about those ambulance responses to University Heights. So I would like to, and I'm sure that it's in the books, but I want to, I want to double check, that we continue to stage vehicles down at or near Cozer and Melrose so that we have emergency services able to respond to University Heights. All of that, again, will be in partnership. We are not going to build the athletic department independently, but what I've talked about and what I've proposed, and again, I'm confident that it can be worked out, is that university police department, University Heights Police Department will staff as they would normally on a Saturday. On a normal Saturday, you'd have two patrol officers out. Additional staffing, which is all of the full-timers and as many of the part-timers as I can bring in, will be brought in, will be incorporated to university strike, this university strike team. Doesn't mean they'll all be together, but they'll be divided up and paired up so that they serve an asset both to the university, the football game, the fans, public safety, but also to the community and quality of life issues here. Those officers then will go, they'll be billed, invoiced, if you will, to the university at the rate that they pay, not at the rate that we pay. We should, we should realize, we should realize the significant overtime savings for football games alone. We should be paying, I mean, the two patrol officers will be out on salaries, so I'm not costing you anything additional on those days, but any other assets that we have out for the football game for a specific timeframe, but it'll be eight to 10 hours, depending on the game, we will invoice to the University of Iowa Police Department, and it will be a pass-through then on to the athletic department. So that should be, that should be very, very good. And again, we stop being just a void on the map with the university going around us or Iowa City going around us.
Thank you for all your work on this. This is amazing. It's wonderful. It's great news.
It's really what exists everywhere else, I don't know.
I know.
In this whole, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
So it goes into more of those details as far as exactly what's going to happen there, but again, what I want to stress is, I have heard that people haven't been able to get into their homes. I don't know. We weren't directly involved in that, much like the removal. It's kind of after the fact that we're fielding those complaints. We should be an integral part of all of it, so we will know firsthand what's going on. Paul, yes, before I go on, did you have something? Paul, yes, before I go on, did you have something?
A couple seasons, the shuttle train pulls in and makes numerous trips. And we've had the problem that the university is routed and those people wait for the train across the north side of Melrose Avenue. They go past the business district, they go all the way up Gulfview. At the same time, that's the line trying to go get on the train. The rest of the people are walking on the bridge. Has the point come up that they keep those people on university property instead of jamming up the old traffic and pedestrian area?
No, it hasn't come up because this is the first that I've been aware of that issue. So I will bring that up with them.
On my list to talk to you, but...
Okay.
They have fixed it.
...has addressed with the university and it hasn't worked out the best. So they need some officers assigned to that to keep them on university property. They got all the part of bodies and everything over there. Old people have to come with walkers and everything. Clearing the University Heights to wait to go back to get on the train makes no sense at all.
And I understand what you're saying. I solicited input or issues from the past so that I could address them, and I believe that they've been responsive, and I think that it's more than just lip service. I'll bring that up. In the end, as far as old people with walkers having to walk, that's, I have less control over that. That's their function as far as what they're doing with their fans and their fan base, but it is something that I can bring up and bring it up as this is an observation and a potential issue, and might there be a better way to do business? So far, Paul, they've been receptive on everything. Any questions on that, or may I skip ahead? I'm sorry, I'm already taking up more time than I wished. If you get down to number or letter G, Marietta Parking, I wanted to touch on that because it kind of ties in with the football. Part of this last month, I was reviewing the parking. I did not realize Marietta Parking was on the fiscal year and not the calendar year, but I was able to get the paperwork and the permits all here in time, and we have started that renewal process. And for what it's worth, right now, we are handing out warning notices, if you will, but education notices for anybody that's parked on Marietta with an expired permit. It basically says this is a courtesy notice, your permit's expired, here's what you need to do to get a new one. So we've started that renewal process. Near as I can tell, we sold, I believe, 20 of those permits last year, at least I found some documentation that referred to that. I talked to Nick a little bit about the number of football permits because I was having a difficult time finding how many we sold. I think that perhaps it was two, one at full price and one later in the year that was at a discounted price. In conversation with Nick, I proposed, and it'll probably be me, but I propose that you continue doing the marketing or the selling or the, of those permits, but I can be out there in the morning on football games. I'm not going to staff it for the entire football game. Certainly, once the football game begins, I'll be gone, but we will cone that off. We'll probably even stretch police tape, but much like we do on Farmers Market. And when people drive by and say, can I park there? Yeah, you can. And I don't know, for instance, I don't know what those apartments charge to park on their lawn, but we'll have a similar daily fee. And at the same time that they're told that they can park there, it's like, you know, if you want to guarantee you can park here next week and the week after and for all the rest of the football games, here's the application form and here's how you can get a guaranteed parking place instead of first come, first served. I think that people will park there, first come, first served throughout the season. And I also think that we will end up selling permits to some number of people, and then we'll guarantee that those spots are there. I think that it is an efficient use of police resources. It makes it so that I don't have to have my officers continually monitoring for illegal parkers, ticketing illegal parkers, or towing illegal parkers. We will staff that for some short-term time before the game, and I believe, again, that we can get people to park there. I'd like to then go right on into H because it's related. I don't know how many of you know Diego, but Diego Garcia is, he has the taco truck. It's the only food truck this year at Farmers Market. Diego and I have a relationship that goes way back. I was an adjunct instructor at Kirkwood and he was one of my students in a police program. Diego has been trying to get ahold of him and we ended up meeting yesterday. And he proposes that he, and he says he has at least three others, if not four others, that would like to do this, but would like to set up their food trucks in that same area on football Saturdays, much like they do on Farmers Market. He's not asking to do it for free. I didn't throw a number out, we discussed this, and how he might park, and I went up today to take a closer look at his operation. The number, and it was just a very arbitrary number that was thrown out there, was that the food trucks would be willing to pay $200 a game apiece to park there. I went up and looked and his truck takes up two and a half spaces. He says there's other trucks that are a little bit larger that would take up potentially three places. If those places were sold to, or were permitted to vehicles on a daily basis at even for the game at 40 bucks a parking stall, we're talking about $120 of basically parking permit revenue from cars that are doing nothing but parking there, or $200 from a truck that's taking up those same three spaces. If it's wildly successful, either that or the parking and we need to consolidate spaces, the vehicles, the trucks can even be parked somewhat at an angle to take up less space and still have service at the curbside. I really don't see, from my police perspective, a downside to it. I'm not worried about regulating. I went through our crowds and people being unruly. When I talked potential issues with Diego, they will bring their own garbage cans, which is another reason why I want to see what Paul does, because Paul and I talked about how he sets up garbage cans down there. But basically, in the center of University Heights, you would have, it's kind of a RagBri type experience, but you would have pre-game them set up, they'd be in a very confined area, they wouldn't be spread out along the whole block, they would be parked bumper to bumper, and they would be parked from George, and they would take up the space that Farmers Market typically uses, so down to the second sidewalk. But they would take up, I mean, roughly 15 parking spots. Actually, a little fewer because there's no parking spots on the end. If you had five trucks a game at 200 bucks, you'd be generating $1,000 of revenue into whatever fund that would go for. I mean, I don't know, same fund that football parking goes to. I think that it's worth considering, again, you all know what you want for University Heights and the atmosphere you want on game day. I foresee people, I foresee people parking there and maybe pulling out chairs, but they don't have to bring coolers full of stuff because they know that they can pull up there and park, and there's going to be five different food types that they can serve from. And it's far enough away from, for example, Paul's property, that I think you're going to get passersby. I asked Diego, I said, are you sure you're going to get enough business?
Yes, it's so busy over there.
And he said, and we talked about the foot traffic, and he said, and additionally, each of the food trucks has a pretty loyal following that they will post on their social media. Anyway, they're convinced, I don't know what food truck fee is for Farmers Market, but I would venture it's not 200 bucks. I mean, I don't know, 200 bucks per truck, per game, per seven home games. So anyway, I throw that out there, considering Diego said he could try to put a proposal together and be here to speak with you all tonight. And I said, you know, they're really, this is laying the groundwork, let me take this conversation to council. I don't see, I don't see any reason not to pursue it. There are potential downsides, those are garbage and things like that, but they're very, I mean, they're wanting to do this. And bottom line is, if it doesn't work out, if it turns out that it's a poor experience, we don't continue with it. So, I put that out there for you, and I guess I would just ask for input whether this is something that I, when I talked football parking, really when we left, when Nick and I finished, he said, kind of, this is in your court, do with what you need to, to make it work, because the system that was in place wasn't being utilized. So, I toss it out there. Is there interest? Is there not interest? Would you rather we stay away from that? These are all licensed, bonded, insured, health inspected, currently operating food truck persons.
I think it's a great idea and it's certainly ready money because, I mean, I can attest to the traffic up and down that corridor, and it's incredible.
The other thing that I thought of as far as potential, I guess, downsides is in the future, let's say it is successful, now you have potentially others that are coming. It doesn't mean that you have to line everybody up down there, although if it was that successful and there was that demand, then maybe you increase fees. But much like Iowa City Farmers Market has a limited number of spots, you have a limited number of spots. And if you were here last year, you get first come, first served, even if the fees are jacked. So it's just something to consider. I think it's, I think it potentially generates much more income than those spaces have used, have seen generated from football games and even from Farmers Markets. And I think that it does add for seven days, I mean...
We have an ordinance on the book. Can I have Steve review that?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so if the council were to want to embrace this idea, you need to amend the sales ordinance number 81, which prohibits any sales from public places except on Farmers Market days and Farmers Market locations. And, you know, they couldn't park on a, like, on the yard of someplace in it either because that's also prohibited by ordinance 81.
Yeah, for me, then the question is like, okay, well, then the next people that show up are going to be t-shirt vendors.
I get quite a few calls at the beginning of the football season for t-shirts vending, hey, I want to have a barbecue in the backyard and sell plates. So I, it's your decision, but you're going to open it up to a lot of people. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but it could be problematic.
So what is your...
And I'm not asking for emotion, I'm just putting it out there. That's why Diego came. And again, I think there are ways to regulate that, whether, again, you limit the number of vendors. Farmers Market and Iowa City, again, I'll use that as an example. They don't just say, well, the lower level's full, so now we're going to expand it to the upper level. There's a set number of spaces, and when those are gone, those are gone. I think you control, you could control it potentially that way. You could also control it potentially by raising the fee until your fee balanced with the demand, yeah. Or, or potentially, is it necessarily bad that, okay, instead of setting up on the parkway, because they do, I know that when I walk around and talk to the community, you know, well, I've always set up here, they're not supposed to, but do you put them in that then centralized location and say, look, instead of getting 40 bucks a space, or we only sold two year passes at maybe 250 bucks, if we got 200 bucks for every three spaces every game? Again, I don't mean to be pitching it, I don't mean to be trying to get you to, I'm not doing that at all, I'm just putting it out there. Diego brought it to me, I went up and looked at it, and from a police perspective, I don't have any concerns. You guys have a much more global perspective and global responsibility than I do.
Virginia, what was your objection?
I think it sounds fun, I just think it's going to cause a lot of complaints and consternation from people who want to do other types of sales in other parts of town, which doesn't, I mean, and maybe the answer is as simple as, nope, we're just doing this one thing.
I mean, down there where Steffi Gahn lives, you know, and down on Highland, they bring in trucks and things all the time, and some of the citizens have bring in, you know...
I think Virginia's point is valid for consideration, very valid. I mean, I've been at enough council meetings already that I would not be surprised if a resident or a property owner came and said, well, you're allowing that there, I want to do the same thing on my property. Because that already happens with rental issues and parking, and, I mean, I've already heard that here.
I'd like to get public input on this.
Yeah, I feel like I don't...
You know, and we could put it as an agenda item next month, but...
I don't know if Sylvia's still here, Sylvia, are you still there? See, I think she may be gone.
What are you saying, Steffi, down there?
I don't know, maybe my phone went dead.
Sylvia, are you there?
What?
I think she may be gone. I don't, this potentially, this potentially, I think, could help even Farmers Market, and I know that U Heights has tried Farmers Market and it hasn't worked well, but if you get that established following and you get those trucks that are coming there, again, it's what you guys envisioned for that space and entertainment and, anyway, I just put it out there. It came to me and I said, I'd assessed it and I'd come and put it past the buck. So...
And I think maybe just a point of clarification, too. My memory of talking about the Marietta football parking program was that we basically were giving the UHPD some discretion to basically run that program. I just want to make sure there's still consensus. I think, I'm happy with Troy just running it as he sees fit, you know, he's going to be, use his time as he sees appropriate, if he can sell the spots at a, you know, a certain price that he sets, I think that's great. Do we have consensus for that? Seeing...
Yeah.
Head shaking, yeah, okay.
The, I asked when I was up there today, speaking of the parking, I asked about the rental properties that are there, the hotels, but the apartments, and what happens with that green space? And I was told that they park cars on there.
Yeah.
It'll be in my phone, right?
The lawn in front of the apartment buildings.
They park.
So, whether it's the food trucks or our own football parking in the public, if we're permitting them to park, we're potentially blocking that off. Not that that is a bad thing, there's nothing that says you have to let them have access to drive over the curb if it's being used, but that is potentially, somebody may take exception to that. But again, I don't, if it comes to that, then it means that whatever you're doing there has been very, very successful and is being utilized, whether that's just plain parking.
I don't think it's any more egregious than parking cars on lawns, I think that's awful.
And I don't disagree, Dottie, I don't disagree at all. I'm just trying to anticipate negative comments, the criticisms, the critical comments. So, I don't need anything more than that. I want to put it out there. I would only also say that...
Hey Sylvia, I think I lost you.
So, if the food trucks are going to make this work, they're going to need something.
I'm not sure it's going to empower...
Anyway, the last thing I'd like to jump to is, is number J, or letter J.
Okay, I'm going to try again.
Kickoff to 5K.
I got Sylvia back.
Sylvia, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I went through the proposal on H, and I spoke with you a little bit up at Farmers Market today when I saw you and was talking to Diego. And I just, one, you had been quiet, so I wasn't sure, but I see it potentially tying into potentially helping out Farmers Market. Virginia brought up a point that, is that going to then open the door? Is it a slippery slope? Not her words, but mine, as far as things. But do you have any input on that? I mean, I know what you and I discussed, but I think that...
What's slippery slope? I say that again?
Oh, it's a $200 fee that he talked about with Diego's food truck and bringing in maybe four or five food trucks during the game.
Like $800, $1,000 a game, right?
Yeah, so he wanted to know if you had comment on that.
No, I mean, that's just an arbitrary number. I don't know if council has any other ideas, but it, you know, if we were to get $7,000 per game, it's a lot more than the $50 we were getting per game last year. So I'm just concerned about the city having a valuable asset that's not being used. And I'd rather see us pocket away that money for street repairs, sidewalk repairs, adding new lighting in areas of the city that are, you know, don't have enough lighting, or adding more money to the tree boards so that we can continue to trim our trees so that they don't, you know, block our lights.
Sylvia?
Should we talk about all the things that we want to spend money on right now?
Sylvia?
How can I ask you a question?
As long as you can put it in the microphone because I can hardly hear.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Some of the council was questioning whether we should have the food trucks there, or whether the citizens might be unhappy about that. And I kind of want your input on that because I live a block away, so I see the traffic up and down on a game day, and I, you know, think it would be a really great opportunity to make some money. But there was a question from council as to whether that would be a good precedent to set.
It was more a discussion point.
It would be a conditional precedent, meaning the city has no, we have no baseline for any of this type of activity. We've never done it. And it was brought up during the mayoral, when we had candidates who were running for our council, I think it was Aaron Jipley or Schaefer that talked about doing a Science Thursday equivalent for University Heights. And actually, that would be the standard to play if they are truck, food vendors that are coming from... standard to play if they are trucks, food vendors that are coming from the very successful program at the Science Thursday event and do festivals throughout the area. Those are the types of food vendors we want. We want them to have a lot of experience handling big crowds, having all the required regulations, and knowing how to run a business. So that if it doesn't work out for them, they can be no shows, you know, if things just don't work out for us.
And I would echo that point, that if you're going to allow it, I think these are reputable companies as opposed to somebody that's setting up on a curb. But again, it's going on 10 o'clock. I really just want to put it out there, so that if people have questions, they can get ahold of me. I would be glad to try to get answers from Diego or discussion points.
Feedback? I have, you know, people, well, these are mainly folks with teenagers. They want more variety. And when they're asked if there's any way that we could bring in more food trucks, the answer is, it's really hard to sustain on the Farmers Market volume. We just don't have enough traffic volume to sustain, you know, two food trucks.
Well, he's talking game day here, right?
Yeah, but I'm drawing a comparison here by letting you know that there are people in the bracket of families who are very interested in having food options. And there's also a lot of our graduate student populations who are patrons now, who are interested in seeing more options, and especially on football game days. So I think it's worth exploring. I think there's a possibility. We have nothing to lose other than to get revenue from one date and saying, this doesn't work out for us as a community, we have to pull the plug on it. But at least you're on the record for knowing why you did it, how you did it, and that it got tried.
And right now, those spaces are being underutilized, if there's only two people that are legally parking there last year. But anyway, I just tossed that out. I found the timing of it interesting. Skipping down real quick to item J, Kickoff to Kinnick, that's a 5K that has been run for a few years. It has grown significantly, and this year, they have hired an outside event organizer to come in and run it. It has, they run it on the streets with the exception of coming through University Heights. And this year, it will be on, it will be coming down. They will take one lane of Melrose through University Heights. It will have a similar impact that the football game does, but for a much shorter period of time, and it will be pedestrians. But during the event itself, when runners hit that, prior to the event, cones will be staged down the middle of the street on the line, and when the runners get there, it will be shut off at Emerald. Westbound traffic will be allowed to flow through, but there won't be any eastbound traffic that allows to come in. It impacts Virginia's neighborhood and One University Place and stuff similarly, but at a much less scale. They're still going to have to detour and go around, but it'll be much easier to flag through the runners.
And September 21 is not it?
September 21. And much like the football game, any extra-duty officers that we staff, we will invoice to the event. We're not absorbing that cost. I wanted to do some deconfliction with, I wanted to do some deconfliction with the Marietta construction. I was able to talk to Greg tonight, because I'm assuming they're still going to be working on Saturday, and their trucks, especially if they're pouring concrete then, will be running constantly. I had an opportunity to speak with Greg, and he says, with some notice, they'll make it work. They just need to know how to get there. So that's already been done. Again, I spoke with Paul Moore a little bit about football. I have follow-up scheduled with him next week. There was a huge branch off of, I believe it was an oak tree, that came down on Lemer. It happened to be in the morning. It could have easily, I mean, it fell right in front of it. It's just lucky it didn't crush something or kill somebody.
I did have a comment, Troy, on the football rerouting, and it's going to impact the same people, the residents that showed up at the bus meeting. You weren't there, this was under Chief Peterson, and even I was experienced.
He just addressed that. He just addressed that.
And I'm just saying, and he gives some feedback, and that is, going onto, being routed to Emerald, trying to make a left onto Sunset, so that we get back onto Sunset, is a real, real, real bottleneck.
Well, that's the university.
So if any of the folks want to help us by monitoring traffic and trying to help the people that are trapped on Emerald Court, trying to make a, what is it, an eastbound left turn, so that we can catch them.
I can address that.
And they get back to you guys. I would really appreciate it.
Yep, I can address that. That's the first time that particular intersection's been brought up. The tree on Lemer Court came down. I was actually in the process of getting ahold of the tree guys, but I wanted to touch base with Virginia, and Virginia came out and anyway, made it happen. I don't know exactly how that gets billed, but whether that comes to us or through Lori, that should in turn go to the homeowner in that it was actually her tree. She was just vacationing in Mexico at the time, and we weren't able to make contact with her.
I'm not sure if that's correct, because...
Yeah, Steve, I think the tree falling from a private owner onto city property is city responsibility, right?
Ooh, I don't know. I guess I defer Steve on that.
It was on, where was the, the tree was on private property?
The tree was in a front yard, and it came down dead smack across the road.
I just, we normally...
We've built people before.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I thought if it...
I mean, it's our responsibility to clear our right of way, but I think if it's their...
They're bound to pay for it.
I guess I'm not certain.
I'm not sure that's the homeowner's responsibility. I think that's probably on the city.
Ignorance. I claim ignorance then.
Well, I just can think of the one on Cozer, and I just can't think of the name of the person, but the tree came down and we helped clear it, but then he took away all the rest of the tree, you know, or whatever the problem was. The homeowner did. But we assisted him in opening the street.
Yeah, I think that's what I would think. I think it would be the city's responsibility to open the street at its own cost, and then, you know, after that, it's the homeowner. So I don't think the city has to trim it all up to the way a person would do it if they were doing the whole job, but I think the city is responsible for clearing the street.
I don't know, maybe you ought to look into that.
I'll leave that to Lori to figure out, but I just wanted to make sure that we weren't paying something that we didn't need to pay. But that's out there. Nick had asked for, and Stan is stepping away from his position, but Nick had asked for a map or a diagram on where people can park. I actually have been spending two or three days walking around in the morning, and I would also like to know exactly what yard defines and where they can and can't park. I talked a little bit with Lisa. I happened to snag her one morning when she was out walking Max and dragged her along with me on some of these walks, and pointed out what are violations. We just aren't getting complaints on them, yet we're getting complaints on similar violations at other places, and we need to make sure that we're treating everybody the same and not treating undesirable properties or more visible properties differently. I just, I want to make sure that we're fair. So I want to understand where they can and can't park. So I like Nick's share of that interest. That is all I have. I am not taking responsibility for keeping you here to 10:01, but I apologize for being long-winded. Any questions before I step away? Sylvia, I did not get the activities tallies done, all the council members, but Sylvia, you in particular?
You're going to circulate it when?
Yes, so...
A bit later. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
You have nothing further? Great. Okay, then we go on to, do you have anything else, Virginia?
Just an update. Mid-American came out today, actually, to do a bunch of that clearing. They were only supposed to do the one big cottonwood, but I tricked them into doing a bunch more or whatever. Anyway, they did about six trees, and I'm thinking they're going to come back tomorrow for more, because it didn't look done to me, but I'll call them in the morning to find out.
Great. Thank you. Sylvia, did you have something under...
Yes, we have an announcement, and that is July the 16th and July the 30th, Johnson County Refuge will be at the Farmers Market, trading in any old yellow stickers for new stickers or getting a refund for your cash. Any residents that have this stuff lying around in their drawers can cash them in. And these are the two dates that are available. It's next Tuesday, 5 to 7, the Farmers Market. You can't miss them, so just walk around and check out.
Will they also be selling pink stickers? Will they also be selling pink stickers?
I think they will. I think they're going to be trading the money for pink.
Okay, good idea.
All right. So that being said, I am working on a couple of finance issues that'll be hitting the table either probably in August or October. So they've been in the pipeline, so just wanted to let you know that they're coming, but they're not ready quite yet.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a fast report? Can I get acknowledgement? Everybody else has took a long time.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Lisa, you wanted to go over eGovernment. We have some important things.
About the website, we have training coming up sometime this month that needs to be scheduled. And Chris, we need to have a staff person participate in the training. I think it's really important to have a consistent person, not just somebody that may be here, may not be, so...
Not like an elected official, you mean, a staff person?
Yeah, like a staff, like a staff person. So are you going to be able to work with Civic Plus to get some dates that work for you?
I'll make it work.
Great. Great.
Wonderful. I mean, do you think they have to be three days in a clump or spread it out?
I need to work this out with my regular employer.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the switch to Gmail, long awaited since 2016. I guess we're going to have to go forward with it, so...
Thank you. I know it's going to be...
I'm not sure it's going to be easier, but everybody will think it is.
I know it's going to be tough, but I think the future council will thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, are there any announcements? If there's no objection, adjournment is by unanimous consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for attending. Thanks, Sylvia.